Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One is now in a special session. We do have a quorum. Director Toomey is online with us from out of state. And this is primarily a budget workshop discussion. However, we have one item for consideration on the agenda. And unless there's some objection from the directors, I'd like to take that number two item first unless there's some objection to that. The reason being that it, any decision here will affect, possibly affect our budget. So if there's no objection, I'd like to take item number two first, which is consider and take appropriate action regarding approval of a three-year contract for information technology services from M3 Networks and provide notification to the town of Trophy Club discontinuation of contractual service for information technology. We have some comments.
Well, I'd like to start by saying, from the joint meeting, the board requested that the town provide some specific costs to us. And so I got with Mike Pastor and I want to kind of catch you all up on what those costs are that they're aware of to date. Our share, they're looking to kind of solve the email problems by going to hosted exchange, which is not, you know, it's, the emails are held in the cloud instead of on the servers. And the cost for the district, for a three-year contract, the first year was about $2,600. And that's for enough licenses for all of the staff and half the fire department and the directors, and then I think one or two extra boxes. And then as far as looking at the backup, which was another issue that we have, they're looking at a cost, a total cost of about $7,500 now for an assessment. And so our share of that was around, I believe, $2,300. And once that assessment is done, then they will be able to decide what will be done for the backup system and they'll let us know the costs that would be associated with that afterwards. So I wanted to make sure that you all were aware of the costs that we have to date on that.
I thought at the joint meeting, it was 14,000. And then Ryland and I think the mayor were going to get together and wipe out that 14? Or is that, do you remember anyone else?
I do know that at the joint meeting, they discussed Nick and Ryland working with the IT to do the backup, I mean, to look at these backup issues. But I don't know what was decided about that. I got an email from Mike Pastor that the total for an assessment now will be 7,500. And our share would be about 2250.
Okay, and then the second thing, I have a question is, I mean, our IT last year was around 72, or around 80,000 to round it off, is that right?
That's in our budget. It was, the, our 40% for services was 79,632.
And now they're willing to drop it down to 60,000?
Yes. So for this, the new budget figure would be 60,302.
Does that mean that we were getting overcharged, or they just?
Well Kevin, it was 40% last year versus 30% this year, that's part of it. No, our piece was 40% last year, but 30% this year.
Why was it 40%, though?
Pardon?
What, what was the calculation on 40%?
Well, each year, each year we ask Mike to look at what percent of time is taken to support us versus the town. Last year, it was 40%, therefore we paid 40%. They're saying this year, I guess because they've added more people, it's only 30%. And so they're putting it as a 30% figure. At least that's the way I read it. Jennifer, is that wrong?
That's, that is how it was calculated, yes.
Yeah, I did not do the math to see if that drop in 10%, and it's more money, by the way, Kevin, so you're right. The 10% is only about $8,000, and 8,000 off 79 is certainly not 60, so it is a valid question. That's your hand.
Yeah, I'm not sure anybody can answer that today.
And are there still items, and I'm not really sure, but from my understanding, there's still unknown items as far as the IT budget. When I went to their budget meeting, Mike got up and said that there's, you know, something, some more things that they're looking at, you know, as far as upgrades or, you know, things of that nature. Do you know any of those?
That's what I was saying. They're going to do an assessment of what's required to upgrade the system so that backups are done more frequently and ensure that they'll be able to reload them if there's a problem. And that's what the assessment will be.
So there's a figure still unknown in addition to the 60,000?
Yes, there's the, the cost of the hosted exchange, which is the 2250, or I'm sorry, about 2,300 the first year, and then it's a little bit less the next two years for a three-year agreement. That's to fix the email issues. That is the same program that we were looking at if we outsourced to, is a hosted exchange system. Is that correct, Michael? So the costs are, I guess, about the same either way on that, if we go to the hosted exchange.
It costs us the same amount of money either way?
For the email.
To resolve the email issue?
Yes. On the other part of that is the, the backup, I guess, infrastructure that's going to be needed for the backup system. That's the cost that we don't know yet. We know that our share for the assessment to look at that is about 2200, or $2,300. So yes, there are still costs we don't know until we know what the, what that backup system would be.
And the staff is leaning towards going with an outside source? Is that your recommendation?
Yes, we've talked to lots of experts. We've talked to our legal. And having a co-mingled system with another government entity, no one has ever heard of that. There are a lot of security issues, there's just a lot of issues at hand, and I, I don't recommend that we continue that path.
And when, when would the final, I mean, this would go into effect October 1st?
I think it would take some time to migrate from the system, so, I don't know. Michael, do you know how long it would take to migrate from the system?
It would take about 60 days to migrate.
Jennifer, the budgetary cost from the town is 60,302 for IT services for this next year, correct?
Correct.
What will the new cost cost us in total for the next year if we decide to go in that direction?
I don't think-
Well, let her answer the question. I want to know what the cost is, Kevin. We're looking at the cost.
Well, I'm just going to say, throw in my two cents. I mean, you have to look at, you know, then obviously when you start up something, you're going to have an initial cost.
Can I ask for the cost question?
Sure, go ahead.
I don't know the answer to that. My assumption is that-
Wait, wait, you're proposing we go into something you don't know the cost?
I thought you meant, what would the additional cost be on the town's IT?
No, no, here's where I'm headed, Jennifer. The budget has got 60,302 that the town wants to charge us for IT support.
Uh-huh.
Right, that's a figure that I assume is relatively accurate.
Yes.
So I want to know, what, if we get off of the town and go our own way, what will that cost be, number one? And number two, of this 60,302, how much of this, if any, would we still be required to pay if we have to go to a new system? So what I'm looking to do is, is bottom line, apples to apples, what does it cost us?
Okay, this handout here, the IT services comparison, might-
Is that different from this chart?
Might help to answer that, yes. This breaks out IT specifically. The cost of the IT services with the town, 60,302. The cost for M3 is 48,000. So maybe that's the, the cost you're looking to get the answer to.
So in other words, it's significantly less money, M3 over the 60, 48 versus 60?
It's a $12,000 difference.
So then the question becomes is, out of the 60, is there anything we have to continue to pay? Then I can add that to the 48, and then I'll know exactly what the cost differential is.
The 60 is only the cost of the personnel. So all of these other costs, yes, we have to continue to pay as far as the software costs. The other costs that are listed here are going to be continued unless there's a blank line out beside it. Those are the things that would be dropped off on this sheet here.
Well, I'm sorry, I don't understand. This budget in the packet on page 25 has a list of about 30 items, which include hardware and software. Now, it totals to 61,238 at the bottom, yet the budget at the top is 60,302.
That's, that's because the 60,302 at the top is just for personnel services.
Gotcha.
All of the costs that you're seeing in the columns, those are things like software, hardware costs throughout the year. So some of those costs do drop off. If you look at this comparison, I show the costs that will drop off and all of the, compared to, this is basically what's in the, the budget that you see in front of you, to the budget that we're presenting with the town IT system.
So the true IT cost of the addition of these two, which is really 121,540, right? If you add the two numbers together? Hardware, hardware and people?
The true cost of IT for the MUD, if we continue with the town for fiscal year 2015, is 169,357.
And where did that number come from?
Well, this sheet that you're looking at continues several pages. So there's other costs that go with that.
Okay.
And they're listed in a long format on the, the comparison sheet.
Okay, so against the 169,000?
The total cost for the first year going with M3 would be about 254,000. That's to buy all the new infrastructure and get the system up and running. So if you take the difference of what the-
75,000 more money.
That's right. Well, 85.
That was what I was looking for.
And then the, if you take the initial one-time costs out, it becomes a reduction of 31,000. A lot of those costs are one-time costs to get the system set up.
And so, once the first year is, is completed, the 254 would drop to what?
No, the, it would go up to 254 the first year.
No, no, I'm sorry, I didn't say it right.
And after that, it-
First year, it goes down to what?
It goes down 31,265 if you, if you exclude the one-time costs.
So it still remains 220,000? 254 minus 25?
No, it comes down 31,000 less than the town costs. It comes down to 116,489.
Okay, okay, you're, I'm sorry, you're not talking about the 254 coming down, you're talking about comparison against the town. So if I got this straight, the first year would cost us 75,000 roughly, more dollars. And thereafter, it would be how much less?
A savings of about 31,000 a year.
So in other words, in three years, it would pay out?
Yes.
Okay, that's kind of what I'm looking for.
Right, and that was the spreadsheet that I provided at the, at the joint meeting. That kind of showed those over time, and it actually was more than 31,000 over time.
Well, just using 31,000 as comparison, I mean, the, the additional cost breaks, breaks even in about two years, and then we save 31,000 forever.
That's, that's why I brought up the question, initial cost.
Yeah.
You can't, you have to look at the big picture.
Yeah.
Okay, are you done, Jim?
Yeah, and thank you, I really appreciate it.
I just want to make a correction on your 30 and 40% number. I mean, as far as users on the IT, I think the town has about 10 and the, oh no, the town has 60 and we have about 10, okay? And then we have seven, say seven and a half shared. If you do that, it comes to about, if you do town versus MUD, just regular IT, not including the shared, it's 16%. If you add the additional three and a half or whatever, it comes to less than 20%. So it's not a 30%, even that. And if Jim Hayes and you would remember, back when we had the original CMO talks, we asked Mike to do an analysis at that time. And at that time, it was like 24, 25%. Is that around, what, you remember? And Neil was involved in that too. I don't know if Neil fell off the chart or... Are you still there, Neil?
I'm still here.
Okay, and, you know, so that's-
Just tell Jim Thomas to stay a little closer for the mic.
Yeah.
Thanks Neil, I'll do that.
I was actually going to ask if we could kind of take one second to ask how it's going for you, Neil. Are you hearing okay?
I'm hearing you fine.
All right.
So back to that, it's, it's not even the 30%. And we've been, you know, up at paying 50% to 40% and now 30%. So, you know, really still not getting a fair shake of it as far as our use and our support.
Well, I guess, you know, Kevin, the reason I asked the question was, initially, when you asked your question, I just saw the 40 and 30, and then as I was talking, I realized math-wise, it didn't account for the, the total amount of money dropping from 79 to 60. So there was obviously some other things that they had to take out in order to reduce it, get it down to 60. So, and then, so when I started looking at these numbers, where I've been coming from on this is, if you go back to the original days, Jim, when we set, when we set CMO up, you know, we realized that we are buying services. It's what we're paying for. We're paying the town for services. And, and over time, those have changed because either the services that we paid for weren't what we thought they were going to be, or we found alternatives to those services that saved money for our customers and against our expenses, against our taxes. We are a separate entity, and we have a responsibility to our homeowners to make sure we manage their funds properly. So what I was dealing with on this a minute ago was, the, the major issues that have happened in the past have to do with backup and email. And there are things being done to fix that on the town system, and that's costing money. The, the service company that we're looking at can fix that, and that will cost money. And so I was trying to look at this, just like I've looked at every single decision we've made in the past on services, is, is there a break even in here that makes sense for us to do this? And that, I think, has been answered for me. It looks like we will have to spend an additional 75,000 the first year to make this transition, but every year thereafter, over what we are currently would be spending on the town's proposition, is we would save 31,000 a year, if I'm hearing this correctly.
Yes.
And so in just over two years, we have a break even. Three years into this, we actually save our residents money. Four, five, six, seven, eight years, we save a lot of money. That's where I was going with it.
Jennifer, I think you had some feelings in this regard beyond the actual monetary cost in terms of data. And you mentioned in your email, there were some legal concerns about us being combined. Would you, would you elaborate on that just a little bit?
Sure. There are some concerns. We have a lot of personal information as far as our customers, as well as credit card information, information that only our, only the employees that we have control and responsibility over should have access to. But that's not the case. When we share IT systems, that data can be obtained by others that are not a part of that system. That's a, that's a huge legal concern. And it's, it's a security concern. Also with the, with the water system itself, our SCADA system is on a separate, it is not on the same net, it is not on this network. But we can't ever combine that because that is the water system. And only, even personnel that work out in the water and wastewater systems, not everyone has access to that system. That's only, some only have view, viewability. Because it's a, it's a highly secure system that you must maintain. I know y'all probably remember a few years ago when someone hacked into, I believe, the city of New York's SCADA system. And that was a huge security issue. So there are issues with the sharing customer data and with the, the water and sewer system itself.
Jennifer, is there, supposing that, that we didn't totally separate, is there any way for the current system to isolate this information so that the, no one else would have access to it? In other words, could it be totally isolated and still have the same system without, without separating? And I don't know the answer, maybe nobody does.
Administrator of the system still has full access to it, and currently that would be on the town side.
Yeah, could that be stopped?
Well, you have to have an administrator, whether on the MUD side or the town side, someone has to be able to get in when there's problems and fix them.
Okay.
But for, for budget reasons, I'd, I'd like to direct our general manager to go with the M3. Numbers, as far as consideration of the budget, and unless something dramatically changes in the town, and I, as a taxpayer, I mean, hopefully the town will go out and, you know, bid this thing out too, like we did, to see if there's any cost in it. But that's, that's the town council's problem. So again, for our budget purposes, I make a motion that we use the M3 as IT services.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'd like to second that motion.
Neil, you second the motion?
I second the motion.
All right, for further discussion, I would like to mention, telephone and email correspondence with various council members. Of course, the, the mayor is very much against making this separation. I believe, I believe Phillip is also against making this separation. I did receive a phone call from, from Greg this morning, and he is concerned and really against the separation, although he understands our problems completely. He said, "Well, why don't you give it three months to see if these things can be straightened out?" Well, the things, as I understand it, that need to be straightened out or changed are not things, it's, it's not the major issue of emails and that sort of thing. It's a matter of, as Jennifer has said, data being isolated so that no one else has access to it. And that, I'm not sure the council has seriously considered that fact of it from our standpoint. But I do want to just mention that these are comments that we've received from, from various council members. Nick Sanders' estimate was that it would cost the residents of Trophy Club an extra 60 to 80,000 a year if we do separate. I'm not sure of that number, I don't know what it would be, but that's the feeling of, of the council on this. So I wanted to make mention of those things that, that I've been told and that I've heard.
I, I received the same email as all of you, we're copied on. And I, it's 80,000 using status quo, nothing changes. If you look at history, we did the same thing with HR, we did the same thing with accounting, and we've saved our customers, which we serve, you know, a lot of money, and we've increased our efficiency. So I respect that, I respect the council. And there's a lot of things that this council needs to look at, problems to fix or whatever. And I think so far, they've been doing a pretty good job. But as far as us, we serve, you know, some of the common people. We also serve people outside of town Trophy Club, and we were elected to take care of our customers.
Danny, did you have a comment?
Jim, I did have a question for the, for the board and Jennifer also. This portion of our part in the fire department, is it coming out of this bid with M3, this far support? We've got $6,000 in there for our IT support for our system, which we share, OSSI, which is our CAD system on our fire trucks and our ambulances for, through the county. Our IT department manages that bandwidth and does the maintenance and upkeep on our firehouse system, so...
It, your costs stay the same.
Okay.
I mean, your budget in there for, those are, the firehouse, that sort of thing, they're all still in here.
Okay.
It's 50% shared.
Okay.
The firehouse support and maintenance, 570. OSSI, 228. Denton County bandwidth, 5,700.
Okay.
Yeah, just one other thing, I mean, the town obviously has intentions of building elsewhere and moving, so, you know, it, just because they moved doesn't mean you have to pull equipment. Some things you do, like copiers and, and, you know, machines and things like that, so...
I wanted to say, let's review what, the reasons that we, we want to have separate IT. Security is one. Cost reduction is two. Legal is three. Are there others? I think not. So let's, let's talk about security. What we're concerned about here is unauthorized personnel need to be controlled in some way if they enter a MUD file or a MUD email. I would ask the technical experts, can't you program into the administrator's activities a report to Jennifer anytime the administrator enters one of our files or one of our emails? On the cost reduction, I looked, I gave you what you sent us on the 15th, Jennifer, and it looks to me like the difference is about 7,600 between the two choices. And the legal, as far as credit cards and customer information, the same thing would be true there, that would be true in security if it can be done. And that is, nobody enters the billing files or the emails pertaining to billing, or any emails, without a report being generated to Jennifer that says somebody came in there. And my feeling is, the administrator should not be going into MUD files or MUD emails unless they pre-clear it with Jennifer. So I think the, I very much want to cooperate with town, with this new council. I think they have, for the first time in a number of years, they truly want to work with the MUD. And I truly want to work with them. So the suggestion was made, I think by Greg Lamont, that we put in the budget, the IT as if it were going to be a separate item from the town, but that we take no action and give them three months to see if they can fix these security problems and the cost problems and the legal problems. If not, then we, we got it in the budget as a separate item, we proceed forward. If we don't take any action for three months, however, and they convince us that there are other ways to skin this cat, then I say, give them a chance.
Okay, I want to add a couple of things. First of all, I'm not sure how you came up with the 7,600, but what this spreadsheet shows is the, this, this was based on an IT cost of a 4% increase, which has now been reduced. Instead of going to 82, it was, it's now going to be 60. So you have to add that additional 26, which comes out to right where I'm at here with an increase for the first year.
What I'm showing is, the cost by going with the town, you notice I subtracted 20,000 down below, that's, that's the difference between 80 and 60.
Right.
So that reduces the cost of a combined operation on IT. So if you, the bottom four items have no change in them. The rest of you don't have access, this is Jennifer's email of, of the 15th of July. But the top three, you notice I took the top three and added them up, and then I took them, added them up, for the top three under the, separate, and then I subtracted 20,000 from the town's cost. And the top three therefore, you know, come out, let's say 10,000 for rounding purposes. I'd say for $10,000, let's give them a chance to see if they can fix it. Jim?
Yes, sir, Dr. Thomas.
As I stated earlier, the financial side of this thing was driving me heavily, but I absolutely, completely agree with what Jim Hayes just said. You know, we've got a new council in place, and they are, they've given every indication to me that they truly want to work with us closely. And I don't have any problem at all with following what Jim said, Kevin, as long as you'd be willing to amend your motion, that effect. We can put it in our budget that we're headed this way unless, I mean, we're trying to, we're trying in one meeting with this sheet of paper with nothing truly in advance to sit here and figure out a fairly complex set of finances, and as Jim has just shown, it may not be as clear as we think it is at this moment in time. I would like for us to consider Jim's recommendation. We have time to dissolve these numbers and dissect them. Neil can look at these things backwards and forwards and come back and help us, you know, from that perspective. It, at least we are saying that if the town cannot resolve it, we're on a path to fix it. But I hate just yanking the chain, saying that we're not going to let them have a chance to resolve it.
I'm going to play both sides of the fence here. Last year, at this time, about almost exact time, we talked about doing IT at that time. And at that time, we said, "Well, let's give them some time." Obviously, there's a new council, and, you know, they've made some changes, and I have every bit of faith in them to do what's right for the residents. They, we need to give our general manager direction for this budget year, three months, you know, and as I made, you know, as I said in my motion, I, you know, unless something dramatically changes. I don't know, how long did it take us to get the M3 bid? Maybe thirty days or so?
Yes.
So, we've advised this council and this staff that we are going to be looking at outsourcing. That was probably at least, you know, six months ago, that we're going to look at it. Up until the joint meeting, which was, you know, about a month and a half ago, we told them, "Hey, we're going to look at this." And they've, when, as recent as the budget meeting that they had the other day, that morning, they changed the direction on, you know, part of the plan, "Oh, we're going to look at this and look at that for IT." As far as the backup, we still have unknown numbers, and I guess my question is, where do you draw the line? How much time do you do? You know, if I'm servicing a customer, I try and do everything I can to make that customer happy, and it seems like we're just dragging along. In addition to the list that you had, Director Hayes, there's also the support issue. And correct me if I'm wrong, Jennifer, but you had a problem with a color printer or something at some time that you wanted to, you know, get one, and basically you had to jump through hoops. They said, "Well, we have to run it by Mike," or something. Is that true, or is that?
Yes.
So, there's a support issue too involved in that list that we're looking at. I, as I said in my motion, I, you know, we have to give direction to this staff and general manager as far as the budget numbers that we're going to pass by October first.
And I want to add a couple of things to that. This is related to what Mr. Hayes said. If that is what you all choose to do, we're going to need to come up with a decision on how we're going to pay for IT services for this fiscal year because our contract says that we pay them that IT amount in October, October first. So, we're going to pay them sixty thousand dollars on October first, if that's the way we go, unless, of course, the town council would agree to give us some leniency, I guess, on that, on that contract amount at that time. So, I'm throwing that out there because I want to make sure that that's discussed and we have some decision on how that, we're going to move forward with that contract. We do owe it to the town to give them an advance notice of what we're going to do either way. That's required of the contract.
I didn't quite understand what you meant by, "We're obligated to start October first." Are you talking about payments to the town or payments to the contractor?
To the town.
Okay.
We have a contract with the town as well.
Okay, then, yeah, if we're going to, if we were to give them ninety days more to see if they can fix these five items, I added support on here, then, yeah, we would go ahead in the first, next, of the next ninety days and pay our bill at the current rate until September thirty and at the forecasted rate after September thirty. But we would put it in our budget that we would pay that for ninety days, but we would put our costs in there for that ninety days, plus the remainder of fourteen, fifteen at the contractor's costs.
Ninety days from October first or from now? Because we've paid this year, so we're good through September thirtieth.
I would say ninety days from now. Because if we tell them, "We're going to put it in our budget to go to a contractor, but we're going to pay you what we owe you for the next ninety days." But after that, we don't have any money in there to pay you anymore. We figured on paying the contract. Unless you can prove us, prove to us that you could address these five items.
What was the fifth one, Jim?
Okay, I had cost in there really twice. I had fair sharing of costs insofar as Solana is concerned, because we do have an obligation. We have more than just Trophy Club customers. We have Solana customers. If we have a potential cost reduction staring us in the face, we have some obligation to the Solana customers not to choose to do something that doesn't allow them to participate in that cost reduction. But it all kind of depends in my mind, is the number significant enough? We have a litigious developer in Westlake, and he's supported by the Westlake Town Council. We have to be careful not to do things that are purely for the benefit of the Trophy Club side of our business, but to the detriment of the business over in Solana. So, but if the number's not very significant, that is the potential cost reduction, then I'd say it wouldn't be a significant enough item for them to be concerned about. So, I have security, a fair sharing of reduced costs, the costs themselves, and really those two could be lumped together, legal and support. Now, we could give those items to the new town council and see if they can deal with them. If they, if they can't come back with a proposal that is basically close to cost neutral, doesn't have to be exact, but close, and that they can handle this security problem, and they can handle the support problem, and I should put backup on here, and they can handle the backup problem. Because these are questions been around in the IT industry for many, many years. You know, off-site backup has been here for who knows how long.
At the, at the joint meeting, do I recall correctly that the council had agreed to get us the cost for the addition, for the backup system by today's meeting?
That's what we were told. I think Mike Sly said he had to give his number to the council by July thirty-first to present his budget. And I know they had a budget meeting, and they were still unknowns, at least the part I attended.
Well, I would say the direction of Mike Sly should be, in my opinion, that he goes ahead for the next ninety days and assume we're going to pay whatever the appropriate rate is for the rest of this year and sometime in the following year, two, three months in the following year. And after that, we're not going to pay anymore, unless they can come back to us with a proposal on these one, two, I guess it's five items now, if you put backup in there, that gives us confidence that they're going to bend over backwards to help us deal with our concerns in the IT world.
The ninety-day, I mean, that falls in the middle of November or something. I think, if anything, we give them till October first or September thirtieth. That's, I mean, our bid took thirty days, and they have to, you know, account for their budget too.
The budget proposal I'm suggesting gives them the ability to say, "I'm going to get paid for the next ninety days at whatever rate we agree to, and after that, I'm not going to get paid anymore." Yeah, it's like, "Conrad is going to get paid now."
Can you also give direction or clarification too on, they have already, they're looking at doing this hosted exchange. They may come up with some ideas for upgrades on backup and other things. Are we to move forward with that as they do it, or are we to wait until a decision of the board and the council? Because I know they're ready to get some of their emails issued, issues fixed right now, and they have some, you know, solid costs on what that's going to be to go to that hosted exchange. And I need to let them know if we need to be a part of that contract or not.
Aren't they going to have to do that regardless, whether we participate or not?
I would compromise on an October first date, saying that we're starting October first, we're going to go to an outside contractor. And if you come in with a competitive bid that addresses our problems, then we're not going, cost-wise, we're not going to be much different than we would have been with the contractor. And so, these other issues do have to be addressed. I think they know that they have to be addressed.
And I, to kind of answer your question, Jim, I would imagine, yes, they will go ahead with that, but there are costs related to migrating it, and if they go ahead and do that, and we don't participate, and then later decide we're going to, we're going to pay for that migration for ourselves as well, instead of doing it all at once, in other words.
Are you saying, are you presupposing that we go with an outside contractor with the statement you just made? In other words, if we go with an outside contractor and we put it in a budget at that, including the cutover costs and the one-time costs, then we're going to inflate our budget, which I think is already in there at that presupposal. So, if we don't cut over, we're going to save some money on one-time costs for the fiscal year fourteen, fifteen.
Well, another thing that's not in this calculation is the, what the town pays us for the equipment that we own fifty percent of. That's not in these numbers. Is that correct, Jennifer?
No, it's not. There is no.
I mean, the value on it could be a hundred and twenty, a hundred and forty thousand, so that's a cost savings in itself that offsets our cost.
It does not, does not, of course, bind the town a comment from one of the mayor or the council members, but it was indicated, I think, in a moment of concern or upset that the town was, would probably not pay us for that.
I saw, the mayor sent out an email saying that the town, you know, would not pay us for the equipment, and that's fine. Then we could take the, our portion of it or pieces of it to equate to what we think is our fifty percent, because we actually, obviously, have ownership in that and put it out on the market to sell for whatever it's worth. And there's some equipment, as Mike Pastor brought in the past, okay, a Dell server is this much money on there. I saw something about a year ago where he priced the equipment on what the cost was when they were talking about moving the police over to one server.
And he did that recently for us as well.
Okay, but that's just another comment. Okay, we have, we have a motion and a second.
Jim, I would, can I please ask one more question?
Go ahead.
Because of the email problems, and I don't understand the technical terms, Mike tried to explain it to me, having to do with things passing over to AOL. I know, Neil, there was one message that in the past you didn't get. I didn't see some of these things until, Jim, I think you, in a response, was kind enough to forward something directly to my personal email. That was the first time I was even aware.
That's a D mark, it's called.
Yeah, right, right. So, my question is, I know that Nick has expressed concerns. I just heard a moment ago that Phillip and Greg have expressed concerns. I wasn't aware of either of those. Can someone just elaborate on what those concerns are? Because I am, I am, I am in, look.
I can read their emails into the, and be a part of the record.
Jennifer, while you're looking that up, can I repeat for Jim the phone call with Greg this morning?
Sure.
He was very upset about the email situation and some of the other concerns, and that they had to be addressed and they had to be corrected, and the council was going to demand, you know, that some action be taken, whatever is needed to do that, and that he would request that maybe we go ahead and put in our budget the separation of the IT, and, but give them ninety days to see if they can get all of these things adjusted to our satisfaction, and that's basically what Director Hayes had indicated. So, that was a phone call this morning, and plus there were a couple of emails.
Kevin, could you go back to your motion, and I just, I'm trying to remember exactly what you said.
It's been amended now with, if we go to.
His motion was for staff to use the M3 cost for budget purposes, and Neil seconded that.
And I'll, and I'll be willing to amend it to say with a deadline, you know, of October first to make the final decision.
Neil, do you agree to that modification?
I'll say September thirtieth because that's ended it. Is that all right, Jim?
Yeah.
Neil, you had a second. Do you agree to that change in the motion?
I agree to, I, yes, I do agree to the amendment.
Okay.
Do you have any, do you have any comments? You've been kind of quiet. I'm getting ready to turn you off here.
No, probably for Directors Thomas and Hayes speak a little closer to the mic and a little tough.
I got it right in my mouth, Neil. I can't get it closer.
We have our credit card information, and I'm also concerned about what I read in Councilman Lamont's about certain emails not being forwarded on like they were supposed to.
Yeah.
But I would like to hear a little more, and I can, well, I'll do this after the meeting. I want to hear about what, if we do go ahead with this, what the migration will be, the timing, are we running a dual system for how long? And, but I can take that up with Jennifer after this budget meeting.
Well, Neil, if you would like, we do have the representative, Michael, from M3 here, and I was going to offer him a moment if he'd like to make any comments or he might want to explain. If you wouldn't mind, come up to the podium and.
And get close to the mic.
Get close to the mic.
Yeah, Jim Thomas, I know how you criticize everybody else, but you don't do it yourself.
But I'm, can you hear me now, Neil?
I didn't hear that last one, Jim.
No, but I understand, but can you hear this?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I got called in by Jennifer because there was some concerns that had happened in the past. I didn't know all the stuff necessarily about budget. That was sort of things that got introduced over time. The first thing that I get interested to was there was a loss of data, a loss of about two years, I think, of emails. That, in my world in IT, is considered a catastrophe. That is a major catastrophe. If it happened at a hospital or at a small business or a construction company of any kind, somebody would end up in a courtroom.
Or the IRS.
Right, you'd end up in a courtroom. There are specific regulations that as an outsourced IT contractor that we have to follow and abide by, you know, to our customers. We put that all in writing and say, "This is how we're going to follow the rules, and if we don't follow them and your data is lost even a little bit, then we're liable for it, not you." So, I'm also a resident of Trophy Club, so when I heard that, I thought, "Okay, how can we save the town money? How can we save the mud money? How can we, how can we fix this problem?" So, I took a look at the system, and I had one of my engineers also take a look at the system, and it took maybe thirty minutes to forty-five minutes to assess the backup situation and know that it's still terrible.
Archaic.
It's archaic. So, also knowing that, that it's not a fourteen thousand dollar assessment type thing to assess it. It's a, it's a quick look. It's an old technology. So, knowing that it's an old technology, knowing that you could put in a new technology, just knowing that, you know that this is not a process that takes many months to figure out or three months to figure out, in my opinion. So, that being said, to address the backup situation, we put it in our contract that we provide a device that would provide backups every fifteen minutes onto the device. we put it in our contract that we provide a device that would provide backups every fifteen minutes onto the device and onsite virtualization. Which means even if all the systems went down, this system would take over. So we know that that system would be in place immediately once the new system was put in place, immediately.
In our situation, at least from what I understand, it wasn't that the backups weren't being done. It was the security or the quality of the backup being done, which is another step that should have been done too, looking back at history. And, you know, they, they were doing backups, but, you know, you back up on a corrupted disk, everything's corrupted, so it really doesn't help. In your situation, your backups, you have a higher level of security.
That's correct. And so we, we have a very clear picture of how our systems work. So a backup is done, a verification is done in the system, a picture is sent to us of the verification. And then a human, a member from our staff, actually does and goes and does a human verification, actually restores those pieces of data onto the system to make sure that everything is working. And a ticket is created and the data is logged. And then we have a quarterly meeting. We start out, once we start out with a company, we'll do, for the first four months, we're gonna have that meeting every month. And then after that first quarter, we'll actually start having that meeting every quarter. Everybody's comfortable with how the systems work. Everybody's comfortable that the verifications are being, being done and all those things. I felt, you know, as a resident, that, that that's, it's a disaster waiting in the wings. And it's not something that I had to address in three months. I'd want that addressed in the next day. Once the backup system is addressed. You have the issue of support and customer service and money and all those things. Great, that, that takes time. I can understand that. But you can't address the backup situation in three months. You can't address the security in three months. You, you've got to address that immediately. I mean, we're talking about a huge amount of data loss that's already happened. So we have the evidence that it's happened in the past, you know, which tells us it could again happen in the future. So you'd want that to happen immediately. And I'd want that to happen in my, in, in my business immediately. And I'd want that to happen, knowing those records are protected as a resident.
Just out of curiosity, Jennifer, after the email system went down, we realized that we had corrupted backup tapes. Did they go back and check the STWs from, maybe pull tape from two years ago and check the integrity of that?
I don't know.
So we have no idea that our, our current information is backed up as secure?
I don't know what their protocol is on checking the backups. I know shortly before the email issue, they had come to a board meeting and we discussed this. And we were told that there was offsite backup and that, you know, the information was secure. Then we had the issue with the email.
A week later.
And it didn't appear to be that way, at least with the email. As far as other data, Mike Pastor did explain that some data, I guess, is of higher importance than other data. So they want to kind of look at each level of importance of what the data is and decide specifically how each piece of data is backed up. In other words, he recognized that the STW and the town's encode is at a higher priority level than, you know, my Excel on my computer, getting it backed up. So, so those are the things they want to look at. But as it stands right now, I don't know what their protocol is. I don't-
And we, we bet at their decision making, what level priority our data would be. Which to me, our data is number one. In their book, police, it seems, is number one, and then it goes down from there, from what I heard at their budget meeting.
The backup procedures that you are proposing for the bud on a short term, daily, you know, few days to get it done. If the town asks you to back up their data, assume you could do that.
That's correct. Yeah, so the mud's portion of the data is what we looked at specifically. And it was under a terabyte of data, which is not very much. It's not a lot of data to back up it. So it doesn't take very long to get it backed up onto the system that would be onsite. And it doesn't take very long to get backed up offsite as well. And then it gets backed up offsite regularly. We have not looked at the town system. They have not asked us to. But it's definitely not something that's a fourteen thousand dollar network assessment.
Okay, let me, let me ask you, Kevin. Would you be willing to amend your amendment to say that we expect that the town will deal with this backup situation immediately?
Well, that, that doesn't, I know what you're saying, but that doesn't have anything to do with the budget numbers, I don't think, but-
It has this to do with the budget. We're gonna go into the budget with the assumption- Neil, are you okay?
Neil, mute, mute your sound. Neil. Neil, mute your sound. Neil.
He can't hear you over the sound. Neil, can you hear us?
Neil, can you hear what we're saying?
I think he's broken.
Neil, can you hear us?
He's calling for tech support. He's got the phone out.
Is he gone?
You can just turn the volume off on him.
Oh, because it sounds, it sounds like a wind sound, man.
Yeah, Neil, mute your sound. That, was that on your end, that sound?
Okay, we're there. I was checking with the, uh, Mike, Kevin, sorry.
Okay, he was work, he was talking with Pastor in the back room. So you can hear us now, okay, Neil?
Yeah, I'm back, I'm back.
Okay.
I, I think we're at the point to where we're gonna have to, to get moving here and-
I, I, as I was saying, Jim, is I, I agree that needs to be addressed. But that should be addressed with Jennifer now in, in regards to our current contract that goes to September thirtieth with the town. As far as we want the current backup addressed right now.
That's fine.
Okay, but right now on the table, from what I understand-
Okay, so that's, that's what I wanted, I mean, that goes back to my question. Those, they're going to do an assessment. There's a cost. Are you all saying budget for next year using the IT, but go ahead and, and participate with the town on these, this assessment in financially?
That, that cost is like twenty-two hundred or something, the assessment. It was seven thousand and our part was twenty-two?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't mind participating in that, um, as far as a budget. But is that something that they're gonna do now or do after October first?
I don't, I don't know.
They have it till October first.
If they, if they do it within this, this year, then I don't have any problem. If they're talking about doing assessment October first on, I, I'm not gonna participate. Or I don't, I don't recommend that we participate. But the bottom line is I, I agree with what we've just heard, uh, that it shouldn't take that long to assess the system. You know, and this has been ongoing issues. And what's to say the town doesn't go out, you know, for outside bids on someone to come in? They might call him and say, hey, can you give us an assessment on ours? If I was a resident, I'd, I'd like that to happen. You know, if you can save me money, then more power to you. But I think there's a motion on table to, you know, use, give them till September thirtieth and, you know, I call for the vote.
Is that the, Laura, you got the motion down? You need it restated?
I got, I ask you one more question.
Yes, sir.
Are you in a position now to back up the mud data if we give you the authority to do so?
No, because that, the, the town, only their admin is authorized to use the system.
Now, if the admin says, I'm okay with giving the mud data to you, you're capable within a few days of backing that data.
That's correct.
How, how long would, I think you said sixty days or how long?
That's the process of the migration.
All right, how, it would be sixty days? If we, if you started September thirtieth or something, or if we made a decision earlier, it would take sixty days? So we would have to work out something with the town to pay the sixty days or whatever it takes you to migrate over?
There's a couple of pieces.
Okay.
There's the, the purchase, obviously, of the equipment. And then we're gonna procure all that equipment from Dell. So that piece right there takes about thirty days. So if we did it now, we obviously have plenty of time between now and October. Then the actual migration, once the equipment is in, that's the piece that takes about sixty days.
Yeah, and I, what I'm talking, thinking of is, okay, we are gonna make vote on giving them to them September thirtieth, okay? If we decide to, you know, go forward with M three on September thirtieth, we're looking at a sixty day window. We could possibly offset-
Ninety, really?
Ninety, because you've got the purchase and the wait.
Okay, so ninety days. We could possibly offset the ninety days with saying, okay, our equipment is worth X amount of dollars. You let, you keep us on your system for ninety days and it'll offset any cost. That'll, no money will exchange as far as servers or things of that nature.
Are you suggesting I propose that?
That's what I, I would propose to the town as far as how are we gonna compensate them for the ninety day migration period after October first?
I address one more thing on the backup.
I, I think I've always wondered why we thought the town would pay us for idle equipment sitting there. Why would you do, if we were in their shoes, would we pay them? I think not.
It's not idle equipment, though. It's hardware.
Right, it's hardware in use.
And that, in, in your opinion, does that hardware have value to it?
Yes.
Are they, are they in a position to give up that hardware to us?
Have to assess their system to know that.
They can't give it up to us. They gotta use it to do what they do. So, probably can't hear this, but the town can't, uh, turn over to us servers and say, okay, half of this is yours, so we're gonna give you the whole thing. They can't do that.
Well, they actually use virtualization, so they can actually copy all their data from one server to another. So let's say there are ten total servers and the number is fifty percent, if that was the number. You can actually copy that fifty percent of server usage from one server or the other. So you could say, the mud's gonna use five and you guys can have five.
So they would be in a position to turn over a certain amount of equipment to us, including a server? You know, if they could put it off on another server and free up that server and say, okay, you get, you own half of this server and we own half. But we have two servers. I'm just making these numbers up.
Right.
So we're gonna load, offload our piece onto the second server. And we're gonna give you the first server, do with it what you want.
Right.
We don't care if you sell it or what you do with it.
It, it comes down to, do they have the expertise to do it? And does that expertise that they may have to outsource themselves cost more money?
Right, I agree with that.
When you go with an outsourced company who says, like, like my company, who says, here's the dollar figure, if it takes us more effort to do it, it doesn't grow where it's gonna be on our staff.
Yeah, I, I understand what you just said. And I would reiterate what I said in that I don't expect them to give us money. I expect them to give us equipment.
Jim, I wanna, I wanna say something about that. The town's IT Director, Mike Pastor, met with M three's engineer, Bob. And that was the, one of the, the main purposes of the meeting, for them to look at the system and say, the, the question I had is, what's the easiest way? If we were to separate systems, what's the easiest and most beneficial to everyone to do? How would that process go? And those two agreed that a buyout of the system was easier than trying to separate out pieces. So I, that wasn't to say that there's not another way to do it. It was that that was how his company and, and IT both agreed. That was the easiest way for that to be, to get that accomplished. But I didn't hear from either one of them that that's the only way. I just heard that that, they felt that was the easiest way, which is what I was looking for.
All right, are we, are we down to the point now? Laura, you need a, go ahead.
Um, the Dell quote was that might change with some time here. We had talked about that, the, the quote that you gave us might change in time. So are we gonna be beyond that time where we might have to look at some change in figures?
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, I, I did add like five percent, I believe, five percent into the budgeted amount that I have when I compared, in case it does go beyond that timeframe. So there is a little bit budgeted in there for a little higher cost on that. So the cost that you're seeing for M three are the, for the infrastructure, there's some, a little bit of extra put in there because I didn't know when we would get to the point that we're ready to actually purchase that equipment. And, you know, they're, they're not gonna hold their costs forever. They gave us basically, I think, like a sixty day quote or something.
So if we try and go back and get them to, while you're here now, so I guess you can, if we make a September thirtieth deadline, is that gonna change the price on the equipment?
No, it shouldn't.
Okay.
No. So let me address one more thing. Given that the mud doesn't have any technical expertise, how will the mud know if the assessment done by the town is correct? You know, so-
Technical expertise during-
That's right.
Well, poor resident, someone that looks like you.
So that, there's a specific procedure they need to follow and make sure that backups are being done. Make sure that the physical equipment's in place and make sure verifications are being done. And then someone's gonna need to verify that and say, this is good.
There, there's a programmer on the council currently, Ryland. And he has a lot of expertise in, you know, hardware. Then the mayor obviously runs a software company. So on their side, yeah, they, they have, you know, pretty good expertise.
But their interest is for you to stay, right?
Yes.
So-
I mean, but I know what you're saying, but, you know, they're pretty upstanding people. And they, especially, I know Ryland will tell it like it is. He's, he's a black and white person.
My concern would not be-
It doesn't hurt to have someone representing us. I understand what you're saying.
That there would be somebody representing the mud, who was an expert and said, this is, this is proper.
As I said, we'd probably bring in someone that kind of looks like you. Might not be wearing a pink shirt that day, but-
And I, I do wanna say that, um, it's, it's your, y'all's decision on how we move forward with this. But I, I do take issue with the fact that we were able to get this exact assessment done. And I'll tell you the cost, five hundred dollars. The exact assessment that I'm hearing, we're now gonna pay twenty-two fifty or something to the town to do that assessment again. That's where I really take an issue with it. We already, we already pay for a service. And in my opinion, that should have already been looked at as part of our services that we receive.
Well, should we do our own assessment, as I think you were alluding to? Is say, okay, you know, we're an entity. We have responsibilities to our customers. Should we do-
Well, that's what we did, Kevin. That's what we already did.
I know, but did you assess their, you assessed their backup system already? You, you mentioned in it that you had looked at it. It probably took you thirty-five minutes or something like that.
It was just a visual.
Okay.
So there hasn't been a full assessment done of their system, but I can tell you the system is archaic just by looking at it. And that, that needs, that doesn't need to be, the actual fix of that doesn't need to be addressed in thirty, sixty, ninety days. It needs to be addressed immediately or you have a real problem with your customer base.
Are you familiar with a company called Avtech?
Uh, is that the outsourced IT provider, yeah?
Is that, Jennifer, is that the one that got the bid from?
I don't know.
Yeah, I think it was that. Mike? I think Mike's in the closet there, isn't he? Was it Avtech that gave you the bid for the backup?
AVtech, yeah.
AVtech, okay. Are you familiar with that company or?
No.
Okay. All right, are we down to, we need to take action or you, you need to restate?
I think the motion was to, you know, direct the general manager to, for budgetary reasons, to use the M three numbers in our budget and then give the town till September thirtieth to come up with their plans with all numbers, backup, hardware, whatever's needed. Uh, and decide on that time to go forward with M three or not.
That gives us two more meetings and gives the council at least three, maybe four more meetings to-
Be twice, plus not including the budget.
Right. So, I mean, that gives us ample time, I think, to, to make this decision.
From what I'm hearing, Mike, was you, is it, yeah, from Mike- From what I'm hearing, Mike, was you, is it, yeah, uh, from Mike, I mean, it doesn't take that long to assess and come up with numbers. You know, possibly the town goes out for bids on that, you know, on their IT. I, I don't know, that's their choice, but that's my motion.
If, if they make a decision by October or September thirtieth and you need ninety days to transition, we're talking about January the first, so budget-wise, we should anticipate, since we're going forward with the M three solution, we should anticipate that we have to stay on the town system until January one. And you, from October one to January one, you will be working on the transition, but you won't be ready to do the transition for ninety days. Is that about it?
There'll be pieces of the transition happening all that time, yes.
So I think both budget, both budget entities, town and mud, should anticipate we're gonna be on the town system until January one, therefore, both of us should put it in our budget accordingly.
Okay, you have a motion, Kevin.
Yeah, uh, Neil, you still there?
I'm s, yes, I'm still there.
So in addition to what I just mentioned earlier, I'll, I'll be, uh, to amend it. I gue, I guess, we have so many, uh, motions there. We have the original motion and then the amendment, we never voted on that. You know, that's one good thing about Nick being here, he always keeps us in order. Does anyone have, do we need to vote on the original motion and then, we already changed the amendment? Or, I, I'll just start from square one. I, I make, you know, I retract my original motion.
And as a second, I agree.
Now we've got a clean slate.
Legal or not, we're gonna do it this way.
Okay, the motion that I make is that we direct the general manager to, uh, consider, or use the M three, uh, integration for our IT services and allow the town till September thirtieth to, uh, come up with their final plan and numbers. And also, uh, get with the town manager to give us a number for staying on their system from October first to December thirty-first. By those numbers, I'd like to have before, uh, our September meeting, if possible.
Neil, do you second?
I, I'll, uh, second that, uh, motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion? If not, uh-
One item.
All right, Director Thomas?
I'm ready to vote on this one and I'm, I'm in favor of this. Um, I don't understand the color printer. Uh, our agreement with the town was, has always been, on certain pieces of hardware, if it benefits just one entity or the other, that entity would fund it a hundred percent. So I understand why Mike Sly had to approve a color printer if we wanted a color printer.
It was a copier. It was a copy machine.
But if it was, if it was gonna be strictly for our use?
It's not. It's a shared-
Okay, so we want, we, we wanted a functionality in a, in a shared machine that they didn't necessarily want.
Right.
Okay, thanks.
I'd like to call for the vote, please. All those in favor signify, raising your hand. Uh, Neil?
And I'll say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Neil. Uh, the vote is unanimous. Uh, Jennifer, are you okay on where we're going?
Thanks, Mike, for coming out.
Thank you, Michael.
I know you don't like it, but, uh, but you said you would do what we ask, so, uh, this is not a long delay. And I, I like it from, uh, this approach, strictly from the standpoint, uh, Jim Hayes mentioned, uh, working with the new council, cooperating with them, giving them an opportunity. And, uh, I would strongly suspect that I know what the outcome of this is gonna be, but, uh-
Well, I do wanna clarify that it is not a matter of if I like it or don't like it. That's not what my, my concern is, I'm just very concerned about our system and the data being backed up properly and I just see it as a delay for that happening. But I, I've said all along, whatever the board decides, I support that and I, I don't dislike your motion or your decision. So I wanna make that clear.
Well, I think we're going to, uh, uh, not be overly hurt, hopefully, by the, the short delay that we've, uh, that we've, uh, decided on. Uh, we have been sharing all of this with the town for, what, thirty years or something? I think we can handle it until the end of the year. So, uh, okay, let's move on, please, now. Uh, last year, uh, when we covered the budget, uh, we did it by going page by page on the budget. It seemed like that was a good way to do it. Uh, so if we're ready, uh, let's, let's start that, uh, now-
Absolutely.
On the budget, and we're looking at page one, and I will ask for questions on each page as we get to them. Uh, okay, correct. Thank you, Kevin. Uh, we will now go to the agenda item number one, considering take appropriate action regarding the draft physical year 2015 budget. Okay, page one, any, any questions?
Just a real simple one. In the, uh, PID reduction on the fire assessment rate of, uh, oh nine six two, is that because there are more homes now being built in the PID than last year? What caused the reduction?
Which, where are you looking at? In the fire?
PID fire assessment rate is what was, oh seven 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 six, is reduced by zero zero nine six two cents?
Yes, because that is also a reduction in the fire tax. That is because of-
More homes.
More homes and, and also higher evaluations for existing homes, so it was able to reduce.
Just wanted to make sure that was the case.
Okay, item, uh, page two. Any questions on page two?
Well, I got a couple, uh- We have no delinquent property taxes? Slide, second item on the page. And, and it looks like we've had no, no delinquent property taxes for the, this last year as well. Is that true?
That's, it's not necessarily if we have delinquents, it's if we expect to get, uh, any of it recovered. And this year, we've only recovered a hundred and thirty, so we don't have a lot of reason to expect to get a lot more next year.
Could you describe, Jennifer, what the fourth line down PID surcharges? Could you explain what that is? Is it the twenty-three hundred or is it the?
No, that is a new charge that's related to the water and wastewater service contract that we executed with the town back in April. And, um, it is the PID's portion of both the O and M tax that's paid by mud customers as well as for new debt to be issued for the wastewater treatment plant. In the case of next fiscal year, we only will have a interest payment. So it's taking their share and calculating an amount for the, what their monthly surcharge will be. And if you, if, when we get to that schedule, uh, we can actually kinda go over line by line how it was calculated. But it comes out to be, I believe, about eight dollars and fifty cents per month per customer in the PID to cover the surcharge.
And the surcharge does include some past debt?
No.
Okay.
No past debt at all. It includes only the O and M tax, or comparative to the O and M tax that mud customers pay and comparative to what the tax will be for mud customers for, only for the new debt, which is the wastewater treatment plant.
So that, they apparently have not paid any share of the O and M tax and past budgets, is that true?
That's true. Never.
So this is a new item for them?
Yes, that, both of those will be new.
I got a question on page two. We're still on page two, correct?
Right, yes.
On the last one, I asked about the gas wells. Were you able to check that out? Because, I mean, to date, we have, uh, year-to-date total is zero and you have budgeted eight hundred and eighty-five.
Yeah, we, we don't really expect to get any more funds, so we're going to reduce that. And I have that marked actually to comment on that, that we're gonna take that eight hundred and eighty-five dollars of revenue out because we haven't received any and, and we don't really know what's going on with them. But I don't think we'll be seeing any more revenue from the gas wells.
So I'm plus one there, eh?
You're plus one.
Okay, good.
Okay.
On the, uh, on the bottom half of the page, the second item down is overtime, uh, increasing by twenty percent over last year. And the third from the bottom, engineering, is increasing by forty percent, six thousand to ten thousand. My question is, what's driving these two numbers higher? One's a twenty percent increase, one's a forty percent increase over this year.
I can, um, answer the question on the, um, on the engineering and I'll let Adrian address the overtime. But on the engineering, we did add some extra in there because I know there's gonna be some engineering that's gonna be necessary on development that's going on over in Westlake. Most of those costs, I think, will be reimbursed because it'll be kind of a pass-through cost to the developer. But there's a line relocation that, at a minimum, we will want to have all plans reviewed. It's, and that's the major cost that we've put in there. Um, also, we just wanna make sure that if there's a few other things we need, Fort Worth is looking at, um, starting the, having us start looking at the next phase of that project. So we'll need an engineer to kind of help us do an assessment on that. So there's just some things coming down the pipe that I think we're gonna need a little extra engineering in the water side for. Adrian, you wanna address the overtime?
And, and on the overtime is strictly the after-hours, water main breaks, the timing of them. Uh, I mean, we can't control, obviously, the timing of them. I mean, in the past, there's, there's been a lot of them that'll break early in the morning. And, uh, it's just a, the relationship of the temperature, the rainfall. And obviously, this past summer, we all know it's been pretty, pretty mild and, uh, but-
And we had a lot of overtime in the winter, this winter too, with like three freezes. There was a lot of overtime required there too.
And we had that, that sixteen inch valve.
Well, the reason I ask, Adrian, is, is if you look at the year-to-date total of fourteen thousand two oh eight, you're tracking about right against your budget of sixteen, three ninety-one. You know, you only got sixty, you know, what, forty-five, fifty more days to go.
Right, well, obviously, August is a heavy month and-
So are you, are you, but it, but it looks like you're tracking pretty close into the sixteen thousand. So I, I guess my question was, what are you anticipating is gonna break next year to cause you to up that by twenty percent?
We're just trying to make sure we're covered on it.
Yeah.
I think Terry, she didn't really want us-
Jim, when I went back and looked at what the overtime was per month, it looked like the overtime was increasing per month due to the factors Adrian's talking about. So that number was increased to match the projected increase that's been happening right along.
Okay.
And you'll see that same thing in wastewater as well as in water.
Okay.
Right, and obviously, you know, our, our water lines are getting older and older and older and the AC pipe is, you know, is brittle.
There are no questions, let's go to-
I have one question. On the utility fees, which is about halfway down the page on the top half, uh, it's, uh, four hundred and four thousand eight hundred for fiscal twenty fifteen. I assume that if you, I mean, I assume that's a hundred and seventy-six new permits at twenty-three hundred dollars. Comes out to that number, is that correct?
Yeah, um, let me look at the schedule real quick.
GFD?
I think you said yes to that, yesterday when I asked you, Jennifer.
It's G ninety-six, Jennifer.
So we're, we're thinking the PID's gonna take out permits for a hundred and seventy-six in fiscal year fifteen?
Yes, that's what it's based on. Let me see here, um, other revenue, PID. Yes, we're expecting a total of a hundred and seventy-six.
But that does not reach the fourteen oh seven. We still have some beyond the one seventy-six?
I think only about twenty-something more.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's very close, if not there.
Okay, page three, questions?
Does Neil have, Neil, you still on?
I'm still here. Don't worry, I'll pipe up if I we got a question. Don't worry. Page three.
I have a question, uh, halfway down the page on furniture equipment. Wait, I gotta wait for Jennifer 'cause this question's for her.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, uh, halfway down the page on, on furniture and equipment, uh, thirty-five, uh, it was two thousand this year, thirty-five hundred. If you take a look at the chairs stacked up against the wall over there, you're gonna see that every one of them are in dire need of repair. And, um, we've either gotta repair these things or replace them. So my question is, is thirty-five hundred dollars enough, considering that we've got a fairly major expense associated with taking out all these chairs?
No, but if you go over to the admin in that, that, what you're looking at is replacement related to water, with the water system only. And I put that over in the admin and there should be a note about it, um, somewhere. Uh, yeah, it is, there's half of a screen that will be shared with the town to put another screen like these, these here over on that side. Eighteen hundred dollars, chair, boardroom chairs, split with the town, our share would be four thousand three hundred and seventy-five.
I got you, that's the, so that, that's the ten thousand.
That covers the, the chairs up here, all of these chairs and a new screen, split with the town.
So the ten thousand four seventy-five covers that?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Does that include a recliner for Mr. Rose? Because I think he's gonna be attending most of our meetings.
No, but I guess we could add that in if we can get it under budget. Maybe we can accommodate that.
Okay, other questions?
Yes, on GFF uniforms, um, is twenty-five hundred going to thirty-six twenty? When I look at, go to page seventeen, um, these are broken down by water, wastewater and administration. Uh, and I'm looking at the number of employees and the number of uniforms and shirts and, you know, per individual. Just asking the question. Polo shirts, sweatshirts, pants, who do we, who do we provide that, who do we provide pants for, Adrian, in the water system?
All, all the employees get, uh, get seven, seven pants each year.
All the, the field crew.
Okay.
And one of, just kinda glancing this, um, the, we did add in just like one jacket because in the past, it had been budgeted like every year for a jacket. We've kinda cut that down to like every three years, but we did put one replacement in there in case someone needs a jacket, but-
They all share that jacket, right? And they're outside, I'm calling a keep.
And I, I assumed that, that, we, I mean, six, six sweatshirts times all of your employees. Does that mean they run through two a month? Cause, cause the only time you wear those things was cold.
Well, usually in the wintertime, they, they wear them every day.
They're getting five per employee on the sweatshirts.
Uh, oh, that's right, it's six employees, I'm sorry. Okay, just was, I just wanted to make sure that you guys were comfortable with the numbers. When I looked at them in total, I said, wow, I mean, it looks like-
They actually like them a lot. It's pretty comfortable.
I actually asked the same question.
Okay, other questions, Jim, on three?
I do wanna point out that we did budget for you all a shirt this year, so-
Oh, thank you.
Uh, yeah, on the-
Pants hopefully, or do we go pantless?
Hang on just one second, let me get to GFA. I had a question on, on that one. Um, capital outlays, I, I just kinda would, was gonna ask for, uh, a discussion, uh, from Jennifer in a little more detail just for all of GFA. As an example, when you come over here, I, I, what is the GPS system for? It looks like we're gonna need a new backhoe, a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
I, let's go through the, you know, the pages like we did last year and then-
It's right here.
And then when we get to the schedules, we can kinda go through those and back up to those costs. If it's something on a schedule, I think that'll make it go a little faster if we go through everything that's not on a schedule and then go through the schedules individually.
Okay, uh, I, I'm interested in a discussion of what's causing the nine hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred dollar capital outlay on page three.
Okay, then if we go to page twelve, we can go over what's, um, included in the capital outlays budget. Um, in the water side, there's a GPS system and that is a device that will allow us to get a GPS reading on all of our meters, valves, fire hydrants, things that are out in the field, and those can be integrated into a map so that we can easily find them if, you know, they get buried, they get lost, especially valves and that sort of thing. And so that, this is a system that will allow us to get those, um, what do you call those? The longitude and latitude, the data points for every individual item in our system.
Is it, is this a water system-specific GPS system? Cause you can take a handheld GPS.
No, it is not a water system-specific, it's a GPS system, but it, it, the, it gets within just a few feet.
Yeah, but any hand-
I mean, a few inches, actually.
What I'm getting at is I could take the GPS system that's in my truck and walk up to that spot, stand there, and it'll give you longitude, latitude, and mark it on a map. So, uh, ten thousand dollars, I mean, I don't know what type of system it is.
The type that you're describing is not going to get you into the, this close to that unit. I, I mean, this close to that piece of equipment. You're going to be within eight to ten feet away from it. And for fishing or something, that's probably okay, but when you're trying to find a valve, you've got to be within inches of that. So it isn't quite the same, it's a very high technical GPS system. But it's not specific for water systems, I mean, it's used for a lot of.
Things, it's more accurate, like right on top.
Right, it's, it's within a few inches of the item.
It's along, something like what the surveyors use when they go, when they switch over to GPS.
It is the same thing that surveyors use.
Well, hopefully, they're better than AT&T in my backyard.
Yeah, um, so that's what that is. Uh, the backhoe, and, well, let me skip that and I'll kind of go back to that, the, the two trucks. Um, these were originally budgeted, or at least one of them was budgeted for this fiscal year. We put that off until next year because we had some other things we needed to deal with this year. And so those two trucks, then, then there's a regular truck up for replacement. The backhoe, Adrian, I'll kind of let you tell them the situation with your backhoe.
Yeah, our backhoe, it's, it's getting rather old, uh, it's got a lot of, uh, uh, broken parts on it through the years, just little bitty small things. Uh, the transmission's getting a little weak, and, uh, we've been asking for a backhoe, you know, for several years now. It's just nothing been, you know, really imminent. And I asked Jennifer this year, you know, if we could put it in the budget to see, see what y'all thought, but, uh, it would, it would, it would come in.
I know sitting through the town budget, they have a backhoe in there too. Is, is this one that we've been sharing with the town, or are we, it isn't, okay?
The one, the one that we share with the town is actually, it's stationed at the wastewater plant.
Okay.
And I guess they come and get it on.
And then what's the salvage value of, you know, estimate on the one we have?
Well, I, I, I talked to Jennifer about this, I would rather keep it on hand and we could use it to load up the, the dump truck here and run material back and forth instead of, you know, loading up the backhoe and running the backhoe down the road. You know, all the dirt flying out of the bucket and getting on the street, so we could maybe streamline it and be a little bit more efficient.
Do they offer, I mean, obviously, there's a, a warranty initially on them. Is there some sort of maintenance plan on those equipment that, you know, the hydraulic line breaks or something like that?
Are you talking about an ongoing past-the-factory warranty?
Right.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure, uh, whichever manufacturer we go with would have some.
So Adrian, you, you would keep the backhoe and use it, as you just said a moment ago?
Right, I, I, I wish we could, you know, as long as we could, because I, I think there's, there's a lot of benefit to it. It, it still has value, more value to us than what it would be if we traded it in.
Does the one-ton truck and the one-half-ton truck replace any existing equipment, or are these new, totally new vehicles?
Uh, the one-ton truck is actually kind of be replacing a truck that we have, a two thousand four Chevrolet. But, uh, my guys have kind of almost asked if we could keep that truck and, you know, the older truck around, uh, maybe one or two more years, and then we could, we could get rid of it also.
I'm not really in favor of that.
Right, Jennifer, she, she, she wants us to get rid of them immediately, but sometimes it's just beneficial to have an extra truck here when we have all the guys scattered out all over town.
Well, that, where I was headed, where I was headed with that was if you are replacing a truck, shouldn't you show some form of, uh, on the budget, some form of, um, monetary value we'd receive if we sell it?
I think on that, they.
I guess we could guess what auction value may be, I guess.
Yeah, I'd rather just leave it open because then, like, we had a, a salvage or whatever you called it, you know?
Yes, we'll have, anything that's old, we will have a salvage sale, we don't normally budget for that.
Yeah, you don't know how much you can get for that.
Okay, anything else on page three?
I got a suggestion, we, we're on twelve, and we might as well finish twelve, but from, I assume, Jennifer, the way you would prefer this to go is that if you come across an item that refers you to a schedule, let's just defer that question until we get to that schedule, so we can march through this thing from the back.
Yeah, that's, that's the way I was suggesting that we do it.
Good enough.
But since we are on the schedule, I, I agree, let's go ahead and finish it out. Um, on the capital outlays for the wastewater, um, the crane truck bid, that was already approved by the board for us to place this into the budget next year. We have the, we'll be getting the chassis this year, or, and the, the rest of it will be in this next fiscal year.
Is that for, for getting to Pompster Pullum?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Um, over on the water maintenance repairs, there's a typo, it's not ten values, it's ten valves. But, um, those are valves out in the system that are well beyond their useful life and need to be replaced. So we're, we're kind of trying to pick out a few a year that are worst-case scenario or, and, and keep that as a ongoing capital maintenance issue. Um, the big one in, in this budget is the Fort Worth water line that we've agreed to do. That six hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars is going to be due this fiscal year. So that's the, that's the very large amount that you see in the capital outlays.
Six thirty-eight or six fifty?
Um, uh, six, well, it was right at six fifty, it was like six forty-eight, I believe, so we kind of rounded it. Um, the, there's a twelve-inch valve out here at the water plant that's failed, and that needs to be replaced. That's the other item in the water department. If we move on to wastewater maintenance and repairs, lift station number two, the, the wastewater line runs through a creek, and it has, um, become exposed, it's really needs to be addressed very quickly. And it also, this has been a kind of an ongoing, we've received some complaints from residents that live over there because back many years ago, concrete was dumped over that line, and then as the creek eroded, it's kind of made the, the concrete stick up and it won't allow the water to flow. So there's a mosquito problem that they're concerned with over there. And this, what we're looking at is fixing all of that and lowering that, um, lowering the sewer line and then putting riprap in that canal.
Will the line stay where it is, or are you going to run it in between two houses to get it out of the creek bed?
No, it'll basically be, it will be moved slightly, but it won't be out of the creek bed completely. But it's going to be below the creek with riprap on top, that's, and, and let me say, that's only a preliminary idea that we've run, uh, you know, had the engineers run, and they think that's a good idea. But that, that could change, we don't know exactly what we're going to do till we get into the design.
And whatever design we come up with, we're going to notify the residents, obviously, that have to, you know, just let them know what's going on?
Absolutely, I mean, this, this is only approving the budget item, it, it's not even approving the project yet. You all will have the opportunity to approve the project.
Where is this lift station two?
It's right there on TW King Road.
Yeah.
I mean, it's behind eighteen skyline.
But, you know, by the way, Jennifer, that, that, I haven't driven it recently, but that property back there, the homeowner's property is kind of in a cul-de-sac and kind of swing around. I don't know how much yardage we've got from that lift pump down to where it, it does its elbow to flow in between two houses, but boy, if we had enough room, it'd sure be nice to get that pipe out of the creek completely and put it over under the bank and let it flow that way.
Okay, we'll, we'll look at lots of options, that's, you know, we just wanted to get kind of an estimate for the budget, and that includes some engineering costs for them to look at some different options.
Okay.
Um, the other wastewater item is a sewer line rehab over on Oak Hill. That too has been somewhat of a problematic sewer line, and we don't really have a, a great idea of what we would do as far as the repair yet, but we did a good estimate based on the fetal line that, that it will have to, that we feel very confident will have to be replaced. So we don't know exactly how we'll do that yet. Um, in the admin, uh, I am going to, uh, blame this on Director Carr. He asked that I budget for myself a new vehicle. And it, it caused quite a stir at our staff meeting yesterday, everybody wanted to know who the SUV was for, so um, that's what that's in there for.
What's wrong with the truck you're driving?
Well, nothing really, I mean, I will say it has an AC problem. I, if you drive any length of time, the AC freezes up, and I haven't been able to get anything done, but.
Yeah, when you was in two thousand six, that's the one that Robert drove for a number of years, is it two thousand six?
I, I think it's a.
It is two thousand six.
Six, okay, I wasn't sure if it was a five or a six.
She has to take, you know, two other people to a meeting or to lunch or something like that, it's only a two-seater. It doesn't, it's not extended cab or anything, so I suggested that we get an SUV that's more, you know, more to go with the general manager and taking people out.
Well, I think it's not an SUV, it's a truck.
I know.
Yeah, yeah, my wife drives, by the way, drives a nineteen ninety-nine SUV, so two thousand six doesn't bother me.
Yeah.
Okay, and then the last thing in here, we put some money in to do a remodeling of the front office. I would like to get that area up there to be more friendly for our customers as far as the utility billing, so that both clerks can be available to assist when people come in. Not a receptionist, and then utility billing coming up to collect payments and, and kind of reaching over each other. I'd like to see that setup as actually two booths, so two people can be up there at all times helping customers, answering phones. Set it up more like a real utility billing office. And, and where I'm also put a little money in there, and I'm hoping we have some money to fix up the restrooms a little bit as well.
Good idea.
So that's on the capital outlays.
That's going to go out for bid though, right?
Oh, yeah, that's just a estimation to put in the budget for now.
Okay, Jennifer, are we ready to go?
Yes, and I forgot what page we're on, so we'll have to go back, was that?
Page three, unless there's, uh, further questions.
Just, just, uh, an explanation, please. The, the Gatsby thirty-four reserve, seventy-five thousand dollars, what is, it, it says the town's elevated storage tank. Can you kind of just explain what the seventy-five thousand dollars is, please?
Uh, thirty thousand is the annual amount that you all have always budgeted, and then there was an extra forty-five thousand added in. All of our other tanks are on a, a maintenance contract. The town elevated storage tank is not on a maintenance contract, and we can't issue a maintenance contract for, for the, the town tank because we don't own it, we can't, you know, have a contractor be on a maintenance with them, so.
Our new, our new contract with the town didn't give us permission to maintain this thing?
It gives us permission to maintain it, but we can't contractually obligate ourselves to, we can't, we don't own it, we can't do a contract with a, a company for the tank. So what the board decided, and this was actually something you all decided a couple of years ago, was once the warranty ran up, I was to divide up the estimated costs of a complete rehab of the tank for ti, over a ten-year period. I estimate that to be about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so this is the first of that tenth, so it's forty-five thousand.
So you're budgeting for the future?
We're budgeting instead of doing a contract where we're kind of saving back, we're just kind of saving back.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, Jim, anything else?
No.
Nothing else on page three, let's go to page four, questions on page four?
Are we just going to jump to twenty-eight or twenty-nine?
I'd like to. Does everybody like to skip ten or fifteen pages?
No.
Okay, page four, Neil?
I'm on it.
Questions? There are no questions on page four, we'll go to page five. Questions on page five? If there are no questions.
We'll, uh, we'll actually get this when we get to schedule GFL, I have a bunch of questions there.
Okay, there are no questions on page five, we'll go to page six.
Hang on just one second, let me make sure I don't have any, I've got a bunch of notes here, I want to make sure, oh, yes. Uh, we've budgeted nothing for elections this year. What if the bid asks to be annexed, doesn't that require an election if they come forward and do that?
Yes, it does.
Do we not want to think about the possibility that if they were to do that, we should have some funds budgeted to cover that?
Ain't going to happen.
That's.
It may not happen, but I mean.
Certainly, something we can do.
Is it something we should at least cover? I'm asking the question of the rest of you guys.
After this one, you know, lunch is ready, so if you want to break out after this, General. Okay?
I, I, my feeling about that is that some of the people in the bid tried to stir up a petition and didn't really get anywhere. So at this point in time, I don't see a bid annexation into the mud as something that's really feasible yet. Someday, hopefully, it will be, but.
Well, I'm comfortable with being there, I just wanted to ask the question, guys, because if it comes up, we've got no money budgeted for it.
Okay, let's look, what, what was just, I mean, what's it like twenty-five hundred or something like that for election?
No, it's more than that now because, um, the, we have to pay two counties. Years ago, or actually up until a couple of years ago, Denton would do the entire election. Now we, we have to contract with both Denton and Tarrant. And we looked at that, and I want to say it was around fifty-eight hundred dollars, something like that for the, for the election.
It looks like you've already paid thirty-seven oh nine this year.
That's for the election we just had.
Yeah, right.
So, I mean, if it happens, it's not going to happen in November, obviously, but if it happens in May or something, we can do reserves on that, right?
Certainly.
Okay.
This, this one's a kind of big one, Fourth of July celebration, we've been participating in that forever. Uh, the ten thousand five hundred dollars that we've provided for fireworks is showing as zero, why?
We did not participate this past time, they didn't come to us. Didn't ask for the money.
We did not participate this last.
They didn't come and ask for the money.
Okay. Did, I'm sorry, I did not realize, I guess I just forgot.
Okay, let, let's, uh, let's look at page six and then we'll have lunch. Any questions on page six? If there are no questions on page six, uh, let's take a break for lunch and we'll come back and do the fire department.
All the time, Jim.
Time.
We will take a break at, uh, eleven forty-eight.
Go get lunch, Neil.
Okay.
What time do you want to, you think to take bud?
Yeah, I, let's give Neil an idea of what time we want him to be back.
Thirty minutes or so, or?
Can we do it in twenty?
Yeah.
It's up to you.
Uh, let's, let's try to reassemble at ten after twelve, please, Neil?
No, no problem, I am.
Okay, your time, one ten.
Okay. The municipal utility district number one reconvenes our, uh, special session. Uh, the time is twelve-ten, uh, we are down to the, uh, uh, fire department, uh, page seven. Questions on the fire department?
Danny, what's the hundred and twenty-five thousand from Gatsby for?
Um.
Prior year reserves, about in, in the top half of the page, or second from the bottom?
We're looking at using that towards, uh, the, a new Quint.
Yeah, our new ladder truck.
And thank you, I, I just want to know what it was for. Jim, that's all I had on that page.
Okay, any more questions on page seven?
Yeah, on the salaries, that includes a, a half of a fifth person?
Yes, sir.
I'm not in favor of that.
Half of the fifth person on, on, on the third, third year. Okay.
Okay, any, any?
Let's wait till we get to the schedules on that, okay?
That's fine.
Okay, all right, anything else on page seven, if not, we'll go to page eight. Questions on page eight? No questions on page eight? We'll go to page.
Jim, I just have a question on, uh, on the, uh, short-term debt principal and interest, the one fifty-eight thousand, two sixty-two, and the fi, fifty thousand, how was that calculated?
Short-term debt.
That was calculated for a, um, seven-year lease purchase at four percent for, uh, one million two hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Can we go back to seven, sorry about that?
Sure, back to page seven, questions?
On the communicate, on the telephone, the fifty dollars, I asked that question, I mean, your whole telephone system is fifty dollars, or is, is it part of communication too?
On the telephone, that's, I think that's an over, over, uh, a long-distance charge of some sort, and it's always been miniscule.
Yes, the, we've, uh, the, the, the phone system for the, the district and the town is shared fifty-fifty, the annual cost of it, and it's put in the general fund. the annual cost of it, and it's put in the general fund. The only thing we've ever charged the fire department is the cost for their long distance. If you all would like to take some portion and put it over into the fire, we can certainly do that. It's just not something you all have ever done in the past.
And where the fire budget is paid by the pit also, is that correct, or?
Yes, it's paid through taxes, uh, I mean, in assessments.
The other side comes through water revenue.
Through water and sewer revenues.
So, it's still paid. The other question, you have a reduction in, uh, emergency management to fourteen hundred from two thousand. We're running sixteen oh nine. Was there a reason to reduce that amount?
We reduced the amount, uh, to fourteen hundred. We, uh, just, the two thousand is a set fee. As far as the cog goes, we pay a portion of a cog administration fees, and that's, uh, that's what that two thousand is. We put, um, and the thousand, uh, a thousand of that is that fee structure, and the other thousand was a radar system, weather radar system that the cog bought into. Um, and we didn't buy into it last year, um, so we-
You're at sixteen oh nine for expenses this year.
Right, and we've, uh, we spent money in, in our emergency services is, uh, as far as our volunteers goes, and buying equipment for the trailers and stuff like that, just, um, miniscule stuff.
Well, the volunteers, don't they have their own fund through?
No. Well, they had a grant for the cert trailer, but that's all that, uh, all they had in the equipments. We bought them, we bought them vests, and we bought them flashlights and-
Okay, and then same, same thing in uniforms, it came down to two thousand, and uniforms, where right now we're at twenty-seven eighty-five.
Uniforms, we, uh, last year we, uh, replaced our, uh, T-shirts. We had our T-shirts, uh, for the department for, uh, like, four years, and we just re-upped our T-shirts and stuff. So, this year, all it is, is just, uh, uniforms that they wear in replacement.
Okay, I know the answer, but for the, you know, public on the ten thousand Denton County, uh, fund, right now it's zero. That comes in a certain time during the year, is that correct?
Yes, that's a set fee that comes in from the county.
And when does that come in?
Hmm, Renee? Yeah.
Kevin, are you on seven or eight?
Still on seven.
The ten thousand came in in July.
Sorry about that. I'm just, I'm on my computer, so. Okay, thanks.
Okay, we threw a seven and page eight. Any more questions on page eight?
I'll hold my question on Danny, on your short-term principal and interest until we get to schedule GFB, but just from, just curiosity, the prior year expense in this year of thirty-four fifty-seven and zero going forward, what was that for? Thirty-four fifty-seven? It's about this eighth or ninth line down. It's called prior year expense. One, two, three, four, five, six, tenth line down.
Renee can answer that.
Yeah, I can't, I don't remember what it was, but I'll have, I can pull it up to see what it was.
Oh, okay, I got you.
There was, um, the town did not bill us for the, one of the insurances on the, on the fire department, and we had to go back and pay for last year.
Okay.
So, we put it there so it would not mess up the other line.
But it's not a fee we're gonna have to pay this year?
No. Not if they bill us.
It's insurance, and we have to pay for it. Why do we not have to pay for it this year?
We should have to pay for it this year, but they have to bill us for, in order for us to know we have to pay it.
So, you're not putting any money in there for anticipating they're gonna bill you?
No, because it was, it's budgeted through salaries and benefits, but, and we had it budgeted in that fiscal year for, through the benefits, but they, the town forgot to bill us for it. So, then it became the new fiscal year. We no longer had it budgeted in this fiscal year. So, we had to go back to prior year's reserves.
So, if they bill you, then that's not an issue. Thank you.
Okay, page nine. Questions on page nine?
Identified as reserve funds parentheses, pit utility fees and other, at a, going from sixteen-five-twenty-five to a hundred thousand, what is that?
That is an amount of pit fees that, uh, we will be putting towards the debt service for the, the fiscal year. Last year, we only put sixteen thousand five hundred, or this year, only sixteen thousand five hundred and twenty-five of pit fees did we, the board decide to put towards debt service. We're asking for next year, we're gonna move that up to a hundred thousand.
This is a two-million-dollar loan that we have, uh, for the fire station itself, what?
No, that's-
What is this? I still don't have it clear in my mind.
That's the connection fee, the twenty-three-hundred-dollar connection fee that we collected from each pit home, and it's collected in the general fund, and then the general fund transfers whatever amount of money we budget to supplement the INS fund.
The INS fund, right.
Okay, uh, okay, this is money you're moving into INS.
Right, from the general fund.
Okay, good. Well, then the, uh, two lines down from there, wastewater sales revenue transfer for debt, three hundred and fifty-seven-five oh three.
This is new, and because the district has never had revenue bonds before, you've never really been required to move revenue into the INS. But we are now looking at issuing revenue bonds in this next fiscal year, and so there, there will be kind of two sources of revenue that will pay that annual debt service payment. One is through sales of, of wa- of wastewater, because it's wastewater-related, so we're trying to kind of keep that in the wastewater budget. And then there's also pit, pit surcharges. And back, when we get back to that schedule later, you'll see how that surcharge was calculated based on just the new debt that we're gonna be taking out, the new tax debt. That's all the pit is charged for, and those are sources of revenue that go into the general fund, because it's collected on the water bills, and we're transferring it over to, into INS.
Okay.
Other questions on page nine? If not, we'll go to page ten. Questions on page ten? If there are no questions on page ten, we'll go to page eleven. Questions on page eleven? If there are no questions on page eleven, we'll go to page twelve. Questions on page twelve?
We've already covered twelve.
We've already covered page twelve, so we could skip on past that.
All right, page thirteen, any questions?
Uh, yeah. Uh, Jennifer, just, uh, just for understanding, the short-term debt, notes payable, revenue note, fire truck lease, can you explain that, what these are? Over to the right, it's charged to wastewater, and then eighty percent, eighty-six percent to water, fourteen percent to wastewater and to fire. What, what exactly are these?
Okay. The, this, in twenty thirteen, the board took out a four hundred and forty-five thousand dollar, three-year loan from the bank here, and-
For the, for the tanks?
No. The, the tanks, um, that was a, that was done the year before, before I came here. That was like in twenty twelve. This was the first year I was here. You all took out a four hundred and forty-five thousand dollar loan, and we did, um, some projects out at the wastewater plant, and we did some projects out here at the water plant. The, that rate of flow control project that we did to, uh, change out those valves and things here at the Fort Worth entry point. That's one of the projects that was used for that four hundred and forty-five thousand. So, what, so that amount, that you're seeing the principal and interest payments that are due on that short-term loan, and eighty-six percent of that money was spent on water projects, and fourteen percent was spent on wastewater projects.
Can we, go back to notes payable for a second? The, the, we owe thirty-seven thousand four fourteen. That is, that is what's left on this four hundred and forty thousand?
No, that's a separate note, and that is the Gap Vax truck. The, okay, if you go, each one of these is a separate one. The first one is a note payable. That's what you purchased the Gap Vax truck with.
And we owe another thirty-seven thousand-
And you owe another thirty-seven thousand four hundred and fourteen.
I see, I see the Gap Vax.
The second one is the revenue note taken out in twenty thirteen, for, and eighty-six percent of that was used for water projects and fourteen percent for wastewater.
Do we, and does, is this total, this one fifty-four thousand totally pay that off?
Uh, no, it'll be paid off September first of twenty sixteen.
So, we have another year to go after this year?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Now, the Gap Vax truck, that will be paid off in this coming fiscal year.
I see that.
Okay, then, then the next one, that the reason I have it highlighted in blue is that's a proposed, that's, um, to get a seven-year lease purchase for a, to replace the ladder truck.
Uh, okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay, any more questions on thirteen? If not, let's go to fourteen. Questions on fourteen?
I think we should be able to skip on back to page, uh, seventeen. All of those pages before are just how we calculated the, uh, percent usage to come up with the revenue, so-
Well, I do have a question for you on sixteen.
Okay.
Well, no, I just, I asked Jennifer this yesterday, and, and, and-
Page sixteen.
She had a really good answer. I just felt like she ought to share it with all of us. If you go down in this little block at the bottom on the left, uh, the affluent revenue of eighty-six thousand eight fifteen, uh, I asked her the question, what is the current cost for affluent per thousand gallons, and when was the last time there was an increase in this cost? The contract with the country club is coming up for renewal here, and I'll let her tell you the exact date. And, uh, uh, we've never, ever looked to see if what we're charging makes any sense, and quite honestly, it doesn't appear. She's even asked, uh, was it Sloan? She asked one, she asked some-
Jay Stowe, we-
Yeah, she asked Stowe. There, there doesn't appear to be any methodology, uh, behind this, but I did ask her to possibly reach out, and let's look at other entities that are in fact selling affluent, and let's kind of see what they're selling it for. Maybe we're undercharging for this stuff. Maybe that we, we need to be, you know, maybe it needs to be a different price structure.
Okay.
I do need to back up, and I'm sorry, the finance people scolded me. If you'll back up to page fourteen, I like to make sure I kind of point this out to the board every year, and make sure you all are comfortable with what we did here on the growth factor. And that is, when we actually calculate the growth over the last, uh, year, it actually calculated to be about four point two percent. But for the sake of being very conservative in our budget, not knowing what next year's growth will look like, we always like to back that down a little bit. So, we annualize the growth in water meters through this next fiscal year at three point two-five percent. And I just wanna make sure everybody's good with that amount.
Does that include? Homes in the pit, as well as what's anticipated back here by Harmony Park?
Yes, that's for the district line.
Okay. Uh, questions on page seventeen? Uniforms. No questions on page seventeen. We'll go to page eighteen. Travel and training. Questions on eighteen? If there are no questions on eighteen, we'll go to page nineteen. Salary without fire stipend worksheet. Questions on page nineteen?
Okay, I wanna, um, I know some of y'all had questions about this page particularly, and, and related to the fire department as well, as, as well as some questions about the mud, 'cause you've asked them to me prior to the meeting, and I, I indicated that that's very good subjects we need to discuss in the meeting. But I do wanna point out that I provided a handout to y'all based, to, to take a look at what things look like with or without the stipend, because that is, um, something that the town asks that I budget, and I did not. But I wanna make sure that you all see what it would look like if you all choose to go ahead and fund the stipend for the fire department. That is not something that we have provided to mud employees in the past, and, but it is something that the town has provided over the last couple of years. Danny, will this, will, will this be the third year that y'all?
The third year, starting twelve, yes.
Okay, so it'd be the third year.
Jennifer, on the stipend, did the, uh, did the mud fund the stipend for the fire department last year?
Yes.
My, my feeling on the stipend, and I heard from this town manager, when it started, this is gonna be a one-time deal, and now it seems like it's just another, uh, increase thing, and, you know, again, I don't wanna sound, I appreciate the job they're doing, but I'm not for that stipend either.
It sounds almost like just another form of cola.
It's a bonus, the way it was described.
I come from the old school. You, you reward people for the job they do, for the performance they do, as in merit system. As far as, you know, I know people disagree, but as far as the cost of living, that should be involved in a, in a, in our case, a general manager, uh, making the decision on what the salary levels need to be for their people based on the performance, uh, job they do. You know, again, the stipend is a bonus, and people take it as a given, a percentage across. I didn't, you know, as a resident, and again, it's not our control, but as a resident, I didn't appreciate the way it was done as far as give upper management twenty-five hundred and give the lower people a lower amount. You know, that was totally ridiculous, but again, it's out of my control.
Jennifer, you're saying that this is not included in our budget?
It is not included in the budget, so if you all want to add it, I wanted to make sure that you had a, an overall picture of how it affects the budget overall. I didn't separate it out by individual. I, I don't even remember what they were per individual, but it, just as a whole, what the salary and wages look like, and what I've proposed in the budget, and what it would look like with the stipend.
Comments?
I'd like to ask Danny a question. Uh, look, I was a manager for a number of years, and before I retired. It's a lot easier to tell everybody they've got two percent across the board. That's easy. How do you feel, though, about going to these people and paying them on a performance basis, and saying, you know what? You're gonna get five hundred, and you're gonna get two hundred, because you did a better job?
Well, Jim, I look at my, my staff as, as service-based, not program-based. Uh, we provide a service for the community. That's why, if, if I've given, and I've done it in the past, that my merit is, is across the board. I don't, I don't favor, uh, my lieutenants over my, um, firefighters or anybody else. I get, uh, I take that, that pool, and I divide it equally amongst the crew, 'cause they do the same job for the same reason at the same time.
Well, Danny, I had staffs that responsible for doing the same job, but there were people that did it better than others. I mean, it's just, it's just nature of the beast.
And I do, I have three different, lieutenants have three different areas of accountability and responsibility, but they all do a service to the community. It's not program-based. I mean, I, they don't, you know, they don't get points or don't get benefits for doing, uh, the EMS better than the, the, the fire, or, you know, um, public, you know, fire prevention over, you know, um, calls for service, or-
Well, you've got some young kid, let me just make this up. A doer, a go-getter, steps in there and cooks food, just 'cause it's a great thing to do, uh, rolls the hoses up afterwards a lot quicker, better, faster than everybody else. Just cleans the bays out when everybody else wants to sit around and watch TV. How do you reward somebody like that, versus just giving him the same amount that everybody else gets?
Um, I, I don't, I don't see that, Jim. I see the lieutenant managing his staff, and everybody participating in what they do. I don't see, and, and it shows in my evaluation, and I do, uh, evaluation per personnel every year, just like everybody else does. And there's, their point, they're graded by points too, so, uh, but as far as the range of good over bad, uh, it's, it's really close. I don't have anybody that, just, if somebody does fall below, um, you know, needing tutoring or whatever, then, then that's addressed at the time.
So, you do have, you, you have a point grading system?
Yes, I do.
But you, you're saying everyone's graded the same marks, basically?
Not necessarily the same mark, but, you know, there's, you know, half a point here, half a-
There's variance, half a point?
There's a little bit of variance, yes.
Okay, well, based on your theory, and don't think it's wrong, but you're saying, well, all your lieutenants are, are equal, correct?
Pretty much, yeah.
Then why aren't their pay? You go from seventy-six thousand is a high, down to sixty-six thousand. How come one lieutenant's higher than the other?
Well, you have Shane that's been here almost eighteen years.
Base salary I'm looking at, no.
Okay, you have Lieutenant Beck that's been here for eighteen years, and then the other two came on at different times at, you know, different, uh, levels of pay, and has graduated from there.
But they do the same job.
But they do.
But the longevity is something different.
It's just, it's their, uh, pay- It's just, it's their, uh, pay, and then their increase over the years.
Having mentioned people in the past, I, I disagree with, you know, giving everyone the same thing. Okay, you're five percent. There's people, as Jim has mentioned, and I'm totally a hundred percent on board with his comments, you have people that stand out, they give that extra, you don't have to tell them, hey, go do this, go do that, they take it upon themselves, so.
I think what we need to kind of focus on is, I think the questions, um, are, does the board want to fund the, ma, you know, match the town on the, the merit pay, the COLA pay, and the stipend? That's, and as I've presented it, we're not matching them on the stipend, but we are matching them on the COLA and the merit.
Well, right now, the town, uh, in their budget, at least the one I attended, there is no, uh, COLA, is that right?
Yep.
Yeah.
They took away the one percent COLA and left the three percent merit.
Correct. And then, the stipend, and, and, well, the stipend, I think they left in there for now, but through the grapevine, I mean, they're reassessing that and seeing if they'll just go five hundred across the board. Is that correct, what you're hearing?
Yes.
Okay. And as far as the, uh, additional firefighter, they did agree to it, but if we don't agree to it, they're gonna take it out.
Kevin, Stephen just came by my office yesterday to give me an update on what they were doing on their side of the budget, and he said that, yes, they took the COLA out, they left the three percent merit, but they changed it, because originally the merit was only budgeted for half a year, and now they've given, uh, the town manager discretion on how to apply that three percent, so he can begin that if he wanted to in October. So, it will change these numbers a little bit.
Right.
Right.
That's all correct.
Well, he, help me with something, Terry.
So, it'll actually increase it, because even without the COLA, is what I'm seeing, because.
There, it'll start in October first.
Well, Stephen said that he would ask the town manager today, while we were in our budget meeting here, and shoot me an email, and let me know what the end result of this was, and I have not received that email yet, so.
Okay, but he, but Steve did say that they took the COLA out?
He said they took the COLA out, but they left the three percent at the town manager's discretion. So, he can begin it in October or not, and he can give it to all of them or not. So, it's really up to his discretion, from, from what I understood.
And the, and the stipend is in question, too.
Right, and did Steve say anything about the stipend?
No.
No, okay.
Then Terry, let me, just a quick question, as I, when, I think what I've heard you say is more in line with merit pay. If you say, if you say this chart, merit pays three percent, and everybody gets three percent, regardless of the job they do, that's not merit pay.
No.
That's just an increase in base. Merit pay is where you give a pool of money to the manager, to Danny, and Danny says, you did a great job, so you can get five hundred dollars, you did a pretty good job, so you get four hundred dollars, you did a not-too-good job, so you get three hundred dollars, and you aren't a player, so you're gonna get nothing. That's merit pay. And so, when you do three percent across, now, I think I heard you say that Mike has that, at his discretion, whether or not he's gonna award it or not, on an individual basis, and it sounds like the max he can do is three percent per employee, is what I'm hearing.
That was the way I understood it, but I have received nothing in writing to, I mean, that was a verbal conversation with Stephen.
Well.
So, I think all of those changes, we couldn't really make until we get direction from the town on how they're budgeting for those things.
Well, at, at the budget meeting that I attended for the town, they, and correct me if I'm wrong, Danny, you were there, um, they said three percent of the salary level is what they can give to the town manager for his discretionary, you know, is that what you understood?
That's what I understood, not to, not to exceed three percent.
Yeah, Ryland and Garrett were the ones that were leading that, and then they voted, and that they were keeping the three percent, not three percent across the board, that would not be a merit. It's, you have three percent of your salary pool to divvy up, um, at your discretion. Is that?
Uh, yeah, I think, I think you.
Yeah, okay. But again, what Jennifer said is, okay, the, the firm number's not there, we don't know.
Uh, Kevin, different, uh, clarification, did the town get rid of the one percent COLA then?
Yes.
Okay.
One percent, uh, COLA's gone with a three percent merit, and the stipend, they really didn't discuss. They, that's still in limbo.
I think they left it in the budgets, in the, in the town's budget.
Yeah, but they didn't discuss it, I think.
Right.
You know, that's why I said, based through here, say, they can come back. So, as, as far as what we, as far as with the mud, I think, at this point, we need to just, uh, I don't have any problem with keeping the three percent merit, which would not, just take three percent of our commitment to the salary, and just keep that in there. As far as the stipend, I'd prefer to keep it at zero. The one percent COLA, zero that out, because, uh, obviously, the town has zeroed theirs out, so our funds there. Um, I don't know, you know, I, I just, if we want to go into the retirement part, I, I, you know, I'll speak my piece on that. The town is unfunded, for whatever reason, they're unfunded. I think their contribution this year is a little over seventeen. Um, that would carry over to our commitment. Am I getting too far ahead?
Yes, let's wait till we get to the retirement sheet, because we're, you know, we've gotta look at the fire department, and then we need to look as far as salaries, the salary worksheet with, for the mud employees as well.
Well, with the retirement, is it our retirement or the fire department retirement?
We have both.
Okay.
On the retirement spreadsheet, we'll be looking at both of those, but, um, so the, the items that we needed you all to make decisions on are, and I think I've understood that you all want us to take out the COLA, because the town did. You, um, want to leave the merit at three percent, but we will have to get with the town, it sounds like they're making that for a full year, because what we were originally told a budget was for a half a year. So, we'll have to adjust that column for the merit pay at three percent for a full year. That'll be a change that you'll see in the final budgets, what I'm getting at. And then, I don't know if you all want to take a vote, or what, how you want to deal with the stipend, but I need to know if you want to add that in, or you don't want to add that in. And then, the final issue, there is, there are no additional employees added in the, on the mud. The only addition for employees, or addition of personnel, is there is a firefighter added, and it is a fifty, our, our fifty percent. And I would say, two or three years ago, it was kind of Danny's goal to, to move each shift to be a five-man shift, instead of a four-man shift. We've gone through two of those years, this would be the final year with the, the addition, the additional fire person. So, that's the other thing you all need to make a decision on.
Well, personally, I'd say no on the half a firefighter, no on the stipend, yes on the three percent, and zero out the, uh, COLA.
Is that a motion?
Kevin, why, why are you saying no on the firefighter?
Because I don't think we need one. I mean, we, I mean, it's, if you want me to go into it, I can, but I, I just don't think we need one.
So, basically, we're saying we run two shifts at five and one at four?
No, they can move one floater, I mean, we don't have four or five on each shift, people on vacation, or at training, and things like that. As a, a town our size compared to other, I don't think we need five per shift. And when, if you want to break out, there's four of them at, you know, a resident sent a letter, all of you were copied, there was four of them sitting in, uh, at Roanoke at a taco place this weekend. So, I mean, it, it, it just doesn't, I don't think we need five. I, I, I pushed the volunteer thing, you know, last year. If we need more resources, let's utilize a volunteer service, as a lot of other Texas cities do, either full volunteers, or they, you know, use volunteers as a supplement. Danny said they had a volunteer, that he was checking out, I haven't heard anything from that in the past, so, where, what's the status on that, just out of curiosity?
We have, we have put on three volunteers since the program started. We have, um, we have three really good guys, they came to the table from other departments, uh, throughout the country, with, uh, some pretty good credentials, but their commitment, as far as being a firefighter and being able to respond to calls, uh, that's where we lack, guys. I mean, uh, the last five major calls, I have had no volunteer participation. It's either from their work schedule, working, you know, fifty or sixty hours a week to, to pay the bills to live in this community, or, uh, their family commitments, um, you know, just like Fourth of July. I didn't bring on any overtime anticipating, uh, volunteer help, and I didn't have but one that showed up. Um, as far as the fifth man goes, um, in the, the latest ordeal, was I kept a, a firefighter paramedic back in the station on, while they went and got lunch.
Since you opened that door, okay, they went, four people were, you know, heard a letter, I haven't talked to the person, but you had four people, two ambulances, no fire apparatus. So, if there was a fire call, they would've had to come back to the station, get their fire gear, is that not? Or did they have their fire gear with them?
No, they had the fire gear with them, they always hear, they're always in a ready, a state of readiness.
Okay, so they, say there's a fire Hogan's Glen at the mayor's house, that firefighter at the station would've taken thirty seconds to get there, maybe less than a minute, correct? So, he pulls up and says, oh, I have to wait for the other people to come in from Roanoke ten minutes later.
Now, there, there's, there's, uh, numerous things that this engineer on this truck, getting ready for, to, to put wet stuff on the red stuff.
There's one in, you said there's people, there has to be another person outside.
You're right, but he's gotta get water to the truck, he's gotta get lines on the ground and stuff, so, it's a matter, you know, it's, it's, it's what we do, we, we're always in a state of readiness.
Ten minutes away.
Uh, this fifth person, uh, is, and the other two shifts been very beneficial as far as being able to send firefighters to training and not backfill that fourth position with a part-time or overtime. You can see in my overtime budget where I've reduced the overtime because of that factor, of having that fifth person available. As far as shifting them around shifts, uh, they, uh, this is the fire service, they work twenty-four on, forty-eight off, the other, the other two days are either at another job, or, you know, their life. Shifting them around is, uh, if I bring them this shift, uh, it takes them out for two more shifts to put on another schedule, so.
Yeah, but you just said they're working other shifts, so technically, they're working at another fire department, as we use other fire departments.
Are, are there, is school or whatever? I mean, it's, uh, my, my goal in this fifth person was not, uh, was to make sure that I had three people on that engine, and two people on that medic at any given time, that I could. That was the whole principle of, of making this, and also offsetting the overtime for training and sick and vacation. So, uh, we've had a program for three years, I brought it to the, the council and the board, uh, two years ago, with a progression of, of the monetary part of it being, we opened the position in October, we fill it in January, uh, half a year, and then so on and so forth. This is the third year of that program, guys, uh, I, I think the fifth person is, is very vital to my department. Uh, I have no, I have no support on, as far as my level goes, in the meetings that I make, the trainings that I make. Uh, we had a hazmat coordinators meeting today in North Washington Hills, I really needed to send somebody to that, that training. Uh, I couldn't do it, because I was here and, uh, have an on-duty lieutenant that's running a shift. So, we were kind of, uh, offset, this fifth person does that, f- focus is being able to make these trainings and stuff, without superseding our, our response capability.
Based on a community this size, I, I disagree that we need five.
We're a community of ten thousand people, Kevin.
Compared to other communities, Danny, I think.
What, what do you, what community are you comparing it to?
A lot of other ones that have.
A lot, name, name one.
Argyle.
Argyle, Argyle, uh.
What about Colleyville? We went to, uh, when we looked at the fire station, we went to Colleyville, they had two people in that station, because they u, is that not true, Jim?
Well, I, I, I don't know the.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know the circumstances that, that die or whatever in the station, but I can guarantee, I can guarantee you that Colleyville and North Washington Hills do not sta, staff a, a station with two people.
Well, they, I've seen them at grocery stores, on looking at their quince, and they, I said, how many people you have on your shift? And some said two, two, some said three, but again, they utilize other stations as we u, utilize mutually. I mean, we could argue this all day long, my personal opinion is, we don't need the fifth person.
Okay, other comments?
On this page?
Yes.
Yes. Terry, are you, are you the administration manager?
Yes, sir.
Are you also the communication specialist?
No, that's a potential name, uh, title change for Kari.
Okay, yeah, I was trying to figure out who that person was, and I was, I was putting names by these things, and so, if Kari's doing that.
Try not to do that, okay?
If, if Kari's doing that, then who becomes your reception? Utility billing?
We have, um, right now, we have, uh, a girl named Kristen that's working in that position. We have extended to her, uh, she is a temp, came to us through a temp agency. We are extending, or we did extend the position to her full-time, when the contract is up. That's gonna take a few weeks.
So, it is another person?
Yes, but it's not another person, it's replacing an employee who left.
Right.
There was a, a previous utility billing clerk.
What, and I apologize for having to go to, to two pages, but, but, through nineteen and twenty, I count nineteen employees?
Yes, that's correct.
And I, for some reason, I was just thinking that we were hovered at fifteen for a long period of time, is that?
No, it's been nineteen for. Since I've been here.
Got it. Renee?
Yes.
I don't know how, I don't know what longevity means, and I assume this has to be you, but longevity two thousand, what does that mean?
Um, longevity pay is based on, um, it's paid in November, it's five dollars a month for the, if you've been here less than five years, at five years, it becomes seven fifty a month for your tenure, and that's paid annually, and it maxes at two thousand, and I will soon be here twenty-three years.
Yeah, you've been very valuable for a long period of time, so, 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 it max, it maxes at two thousand?
Max is at two thousand, and I'm max this year.
Adrian's maxed, too.
There's not a, it was not.
Adrian's at a max, too.
Yes, those are the two employees.
Uh, Adrian hit twenty-two years.
Please understand, my comment was strictly curiosity.
Oh, that's fine.
You didn't ask her age, so we were all okay with that.
Well, good, with this, with this person's, if we now, we now carry, we now have nineteen employees, right?
Yes, we always have had nineteen employees. Well, no, we did add one employee, we, um.
Okay, we had, on, on page.
No, we did, we reduced one, and then we added one, so we've always been at nineteen employees, yes.
On the subject of the, of the firefighter, on page nineteen, Kevin's expressed, uh, his thoughts on that as far as, uh, adding the extra firefighter, what's, what's the other, what's the other director's, uh, position?
Yeah, I, I would like to ask that maybe y'all take it one item at a time, as far as, um, or combine them together, it makes no difference, but what you all want me to do with the COLA, merit, and stipend, and what you want to do with the firefighter?
I have it as a motion from Kevin.
Nope, did someone second it?
Didn't he say I make a motion, well, then I'll make a motion?
I'll restate it, I may, I mean, if you want to do one at a time, that's fine. My first motion is that I make a motion that, uh, we zero out the, uh, COLA.
We have a second?
I'll second it.
Well, I'm, I want, okay, go ahead.
Neil, uh, director.
Jim, I said, uh, I said, I'll second Kevin's motion.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, I'll call for.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
What?
There's two pieces of discussions. He wants to discuss, and I want to discuss.
Oh, all right.
Go ahead. No, Jim, you were first, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to ask Jennifer, uh, as, as the manager of these personnel, water, wastewater administration, uh, do you prefer a COLA with a, a combination of COLA and merit? Or do you prefer to roll the COLA into the merit? Make it, uh, approximately the size of COLA plus merit would all become merit? As, as a manager, which do you prefer?
I actually prefer having the COLA and the merit, because I like to make sure that employee salaries stay at a competitive level, and that makes sure, that, that makes sure that that happens. I like to have merit, because I can tell you that I do have employees that excel other employees. And, and so, I like to be able to reward those employees on their merit. But I, I get concerned that if we let salaries drop, I, I, I feel this way about it. If an employee is not performing, they shouldn't be working here. And so, letting their salary drop below what, what the area, the place where it's set, is not the way to get rid of them. They should be written up, they should be documented in their evaluations that they were not performing. So, I think that, that's my opinion, that COLAs are simply meant to keep salary levels at an acceptable level of where the economy's at, and where other people in the same types of positions, where, where their salaries are set. And then, I believe that merit is meant to reward employees that are high performers.
Okay, on my motion, are we doing COLAs across the board, or are we just addressing the fire part?
I thought you were just addressing the fire department, but I, I don't know.
That's what my motion was for.
I'm taking notes for fire.
I mean, we're talking about the fire, as far as the mud people, that's a different, you know, my motion was specifically for our contribution to the town.
What's your preference, Danny? You prefer a combination COLA, merit, or all merit?
Well, I kind of think it's a mute point, if, if the city's gonna take away the, the COLA.
No, his question was, what do you prefer?
I, I'm just like Jennifer, I believe that, um, it, it, they should see some type of cost of living upfront to adjust their insurance rates or whatever, and then. adjust their insurance rates or whatever and then the merit, uh, showing their performance.
Well, since you both agree with my position, I'm going to vote nay on getting rid of the cola.
But you know the town isn't giving one.
Yeah, and, but the town dropped there, so it's kind of a.
Well, my, my, the thing I want to discuss on this was Danny, based on everything that was said.
Uh, I don't know, I don't know if it should be Jennifer or Kevin or Danny, but it's my understanding that the town, for the fire, for town employees, the town has now dropped their cola and all they're going to have this year is their merit. Is that true?
That's true, right now, yes.
I think they have a stipend though.
And.
I, I have not been told that. Terry, were you, Terry did say that, that she was told that.
I was at the.
And Kevin was at the council meeting, so that is what we're basing this on. I do want to point out that.
If they're dro, if they're dropping, they're zeroing out the cola, are they increasing the merit from this one half, uh, year at three percent?
No, the merit still stayed at three percent.
But for the full year instead of half a year?
But for a full year? Well, if you do that, that, that's going to be bigger than the, uh, if we, if, if we make the merit three percent for a full year, that's going to be bigger than the cola plus the half, uh, a year merit that's here now, so it's actually an increase.
And the stipend.
Let's not go to stipend until we get through cola.
No, I agree with you, it's, it's a bigger percent.
Neil, if you look at the, on fire and administration and water and wastewater, if you look at the combination of dollars for cola and merit, they all average out somewhere around three, little less, little more, depending on which department you're in, but the town has three percent merit and a stipend if I, if I understand it correctly. So they are proposing, I'm not in favor of stipends either, but I do think that, uh, if you're going to roughly have three percent money for raises, I would, you know, you notice they're, they're not quite fifty-fifty, but they're somewhat close to fifty-fifty between cola and merit on both the fire department and the, all of the mud departments. I agree with what Jennifer and Danny said. I would like to have some part of that money, maybe about approximately half of it, go to cost of living and the other half to merit and no stipend. That, that'd be my preference if I were running the place.
Director Thomas?
The, the question that I had was actually, on this was back to Terry. Did they give you any reason for why they dropped cola? And the reason I was asking the question was if you, if you manage cost of living properly and it not, it doesn't become some kind of crazy thing where you're just trying to give money away. If you really do look at the economy and you, and you determine that the cost of living has gone up X percent and then you're trying to cover part of that, why would they take that out?
I don't know. I was, I was, did not attend the budget workshop.
I mean, we just get the numbers from the town.
That Stephen did not address the why. He just was telling me what the situation was going to be based on their last budget workshop.
Well, I'm kind of like what Jim and, both, both Jim and Neil have said. It, it sounds to me like they took that out and are plugging it in to help pay for the twelve years of, twelve months of merit and, and for the stipend. I, 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 Jim, I'm just like you. I like having the cola there and I like having merit there and I'm not in favor of the stipend.
What they, the reason they took it out was, uh, I think Ryland and Garrett and Philip and I, I think all of them are on the same page is that they think that you shouldn't have a one or whatever percent. I think Nick actually made a motion to do two percent. And correct me if I misstate, Danny. Nick made a motion for two percent cola. I think, uh, Councilman Strachan said one and a half or one point something, based on social security, what they got, uh, went up one and a half. And then they voted to eliminate it based on, they thought that any increases in salaries or something should be left up to the town manager to decide on, rather than giving, you know, a person that's out there again working his butt off and then a person that's just waiting for the clock to hit five o'clock. You know, you automatically given the same people the same amount, whether it be one percent, two percent, whatever.
Kevin, I don't agree, I don't disagree at all with merit pay, but, but cola is cola.
No, cola.
Regardless of what you make, you get hit for a cost of living.
Yeah.
Well, I think the original, uh, proposal was two and two. When it first started off, but they.
Budget, what Mike presented was one, one and three. Nick made a motion to go to two.
Right, I know we, and they brought it down when they brought it to, made the presentation, but originally when we started putting our budgets together, uh, we needed numbers two and I think it was two and two at the time, but.
See, two and two adds four. We're talking about three adding one and, one and a half, one and a half roughly.
I'm still figuring that out on my calculator. Two and two.
Well, look, why don't, why don't we just go.
They're, they're talking somewhere four, four or five percent.
Why don't we just take these things one at a time, ask how we feel about cola and how we feel about merit pay, how we feel about stipend, we can move on.
Kevin, you want?
Again, remember that the town voted to do away with that, so that you're, I made a motion, there's a second, so I guess you either vote with it and then change it or vote against it and change it, whatever.
Your motion was to eliminate cola, right?
Right, zero it out.
For the fire department.
Okay.
I know it is that that person.
And, uh, we have a, we have a motion, we have a second, and, uh, yes, we were going to vote and there were some more comments to be made, so we will now take a vote on that, uh, eliminating the cola fire department. All those in favor?
You, favor or?
Neil?
Against?
I'm in favor, aye. We're mirroring what the town is doing, so I agree.
Well, that, that's, that's where I am, so.
So you voting for it?
Yes.
So it's three, two.
Three in favor and, uh, two against, uh, or.
To zero out the cola.
Uh, Justin, uh, Jim Loss, I, I think we need to get some type of clarification from the town manager to our general manager exactly what they're doing because I, I, I know, uh, Kevin's memory is pretty good, but, uh, I'd like to know what, have it formal, what the town is doing as far as eliminating cola and raising the merit.
Jennifer, maybe we should, uh, we should not actually take a position at this point without, uh, getting more information from the town and what they're doing and why. Uh, does that make sense?
Jim, I don't know how you can do that. You've already had a vote and voted to eliminate it.
Right, to eliminate it. Um, and I think we have to go forward with setting our budget. One way or another, we have to move forward with setting our budget. I will get with him and as Terry said, uh, the finance manager did tell her that. He did inform her that they were, that they eliminated the cola.
Well, that's the only reason I voted for it was because, as Neil had said, that's what the town did, so where does that leave us if we don't eliminate it and the town does? Where are we?
Well, what the contract says is if we don't agree on any type of increase, that you just carry that forward in, in time. So in other words, if we gave them a one percent increase, then next year it won't be fifty-fifty, it'll be a little bit different. The salaries. We will carry that one percent forward with us.
Let me ask Kevin, did the town say, uh, what percentage of, uh, merit they were going to deal with?
Three percent.
Three percent.
Of the total salary and leaving it to the town manager to, at his discretion to reward it.
Kevin, for full year instead of a half year?
It's starting at October first.
Instead, but yeah, full year.
Yeah.
Okay.
But you see what Jennifer has in her charts here on page nineteen and twenty is that the combination cola and merit is approximately three percent.
For a half a year.
Do you have a half a year in there, Jennifer?
Yes, if you look at the top, it says merit pay three percent, half year underneath that.
Okay, what, yeah, the point I'm making is look down at the administration. You got seven thousand eight oh two in cola and eight thousand eight twenty in merit, so that's about sixteen thousand six hundred.
That is not based on a percentage. That's very, that's different from the, from the town. That's the mud.
I'm just saying the net impact is if you take the four fifty-eight, nine fifty-six, total base pay and administration, uh, that eighty, eighty-eight twenty and seventy-six oh two is approximately three percent. Same thing's true on water, same thing's true on wastewater. So I don't know what, uh, what this means when you say a half a year, but the total budget tells me that we're running about three percent between cola and merit.
Yes.
So if we're running three percent and we want to take the whole three and put it in merit and that's not really what you prefer and that's not really what you prefer, then that's why I voted no.
Yeah, but Jim, Jim, we're talking about fire only. We're not talking about the town.
But the, the fire and if you're going to be consistent, you'll do the same thing in mud as you do in fire, as the city is doing, three percent. So it's already, on a total basis, you have it in here at three percent. If the seventy-eight oh two and eighty-eight twenty is about three percent, same on water, same on wastewater, same on fire. So it's just a question of how the managers are instructed to spend that money. So we've instructed you to spend it all on merit, even though both of you say that's not what you prefer.
I don't understand when you said, we've instructed you. Jennifer has no control over the three percent to the fire.
Okay, and I, I want to kind of say, I, I do see what you're saying, but I disagree that it's equivalent because if you take the admin, that's a total full-time about the same as the fire department if you said they were all one hundred percent mud. And it is more in the fire department it, because you're doubling that, so it's twelve thousand versus eight thousand for the same amount of people. So it is more on the town cola side, I mean, I'm sorry, the town merit side than the mud, but that's neither here nor there. We're just looking at, because we're looking at cola and merit over on the mud side.
Yes, we are. And, and the fire side, we also have column called cola and we have a column called merit.
Right.
And then, and they're both annual forecasts and they add up to approximately three percent.
It's actually three point six percent.
Yeah, so it's, I say, some water, wastewater may be a little bit lower and fire may be a little bit higher, but it's around three percent. Now, what the town apparently has said is we're going to give you three percent, period. And, and, uh, but it's all going to be merit. If I were a manager, I wouldn't care for that rule. But, uh, you know, and you both said you didn't care for it.
Right.
So, you know, that's my point and that's why I voted no.
Okay.
Okay, so I think the next item y'all were going to discuss is the stipend on the fire only.
Any discussion on the fire stipend?
I make a motion that we, uh, do not contribute to a stipend for the, uh, fire department, firefighter.
I second that.
Motion's been made and seconded by Director Hayes. Uh, any further discussion on it? Uh, if, if not, let's take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Neil, you're in favor. It is unanimous. Okay, Jennifer, what else on that page?
Uh, the next item on, for fire department is the, uh, adding the extra position.
I make a motion that we do not participate in the half a, uh, FTE for the firefighters.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Laurie, uh, any discussion?
Uh, I do, uh, for, this is for Chief Thomas. Uh, I heard your lively discussion with, with Director Carr, but, uh, regarding, uh, this position, and again, there's more of a background over the last couple of years. Um, do you have any documentation, uh, regarding, you know, basically, uh, supporting your position that you could set, set, uh, you know, give to Jennifer that she could forward on to me so I can look at it?
I don't know, uh, Neil, I don't know what documentation you would, you could.
Well, you know, it's, you're, you're basically saying you need another position, uh, and I heard that, but, um, you know, if you're not, if you're, if you're having to fill a position with overtime of vol, you know, I heard about the volunteers. Uh, I need to know what are the pros, what are the cons? I'll tell you what, uh, when I'm back in town for, uh, the next board meeting in a week, uh, uh, basically two weeks, um, uh, why don't I co, why don't I just, just schedule some time to come in and sit down with you on this? Because I like to get a, a better feel on the background, okay?
I'd be more than happy to.
I'm sorry, Jim, to get off on a tangent there, but.
Oh, that, uh, that. Have a, uh, we do have a motion and a second.
Have a question for Danny?
Yes, Director Thomas.
Danny, did I understand you to say that that this request is the third step of a three-step process that we had already approved?
Mm-hmm.
So we already approved adding three.
I went through this the last two years. I mean, I brought this program two years ago to put three people on shift. I asked for three people. And I went to both entities and, and made the same plea and, um, you know, at that, that year, we put four police officers on, on the street in one year. So my, my three people was just way out there in left field as far as monetary concerns. Uh, the position and the fire, and the need for the firefighter, I can justify that all day long with, uh, with, uh, two, two on the, uh, medic at all times and, and three on the engine going out the door. If we have a big fire, putting two on the quint and three on the engine at any, any given time on a major fire. Uh, and then having the support of, of other mutual aids for everything else, we cannot handle what we handle today with four people. Bottom line. In, in, in the call for service in, in the community, I think Neil left, so.
I apologize because I, because I don't remember, I don't remember what action we took when you came forward saying you wanted to do three over three years. Does anybody recall? Jim, you and Kevin and I were the only three here.
I don't think that ever we, the, the board adopted a policy to do that.
No.
The board said they would approve year by year.
And last.
And the last two years that has been approved, but it was not a, a, approved program or policy of that was going to happen.
And last year, you know, you came to us and said, well, the town approved the half a person. That was not true. They, and I'm just going to, I'm going to follow through with this.
Okay.
And, uh, we approved it, then it went back and Mike Sly at a BRP, uh, meeting, and I think Jennifer, you may have been there and, uh, Jim Hayes, I know was there. He sat there in front of the BRP and said, well, you know, Danny has to create two budgets and, you know, we, if the mud approves a half firefighter like they did last year, we have to change our budget to a, adopt that. So, you know, he was basically saying they didn't, they weren't on board last year with it and then they had to, you know, be accountable for half a firefighter to change their budget. That's what's on tape.
Okay, I mean.
Yeah, what, Danny, what's driving me on this four versus five per shift is that, uh, this is not a rich town like Roanoke.
No, it's, it's not.
And so we may have to tighten our bill a little tighter in all departments. Uh, now the town apparently is flush with money at the moment. The, the P E D growth has given them significant increases in their reserves. They paid six hundred thousand to E D C four A to buy out some of their debt. So they're currently apparently in a, a, uh, comfortable position, if not a little more than comfortable. But the point is that we've, this town's been through these rising building houses and then leveled off. Every time we've done that, when it levels off, the town is in financial trouble. And I, as a mud director, don't want to see us put ourselves in a path toward five per shift. You know, we, we're now at four and a third per shift, so to speak. You added the fifth guy last year. Now we're going to go to four and two-thirds and pretty soon we'll go to five. And, uh.
I thought we had four and two-thirds and we're going to five, no?
Yeah, we have, we have five on two shifts.
Oh, we do?
Yes, and this would be the third crew, which is the final crew adding a fifth person.
I'm not adding five people, I'm adding one more person to the third shift. I have three shifts, A, B and C.
Right.
And this is the fifth person on the third shift.
Five, four right now.
Danny, when you were talking about the training, I'm just, is there a, no way that a person can kind of float between those? Like if you knew that someone needed to go to that training today, is there a reason that we couldn't have had of the fifth person move over to this shift so that, so today someone could go and he just switch out shifts? I'm just asking.
It, it can be done, but I'm just saying that these, these guys work a twenty-four, forty-eight. They have other lives on that, on their day, day. It, it can be done, but I'm just saying that these, these guys work a twenty-four, forty-eight, they have other lives on that, on their days, days off. This is their, this is their third day of, of their job, twenty-four hours, if they're away from everything else, their family. Any other kind of income or whatever, or school or whatever it is. So swift, shift them around, you can shift them around, you know, for a, a period of time, but just intermittent one in two days like that, it's, it's really hard on the system. It really is hard on the system.
Does it happen a lot? Does it happen a lot, is that one of the reasons this is beneficial, is that happens quite frequently? That it ends that, it happens to be the shift without the third person, I mean, without the fifth person. That therefore the, someone can't go to training because you don't have them, that happens frequently?
That, that along with sick and vacation and training, training's a big issue too. Uh, and when you send somebody away from training, you have to, I really need to backfill that fourth position to make sure I got two and two.
Right, that's what I was asking, is that, that happens frequently?
Very frequently. With more and more activity in this community of ten thousand people with, with what we have on the ground, it's happened a lot more frequently yesterday.
Your main concern, as you said, is three on the quint or three on the trucks, whatever you, the pumper or whatever. Which, again, hate to keep bringing it up, but that totally goes against what you said, oh, if there was a fire in Hogan's Glen, you could have two and. One person, fire truck could get, you know, person, you just said you have to have two on the truck, so that kind of contradicts your earlier statement. But on mutual aid, on fires, when, in the past year, when we've had the fires. Have there not been other departments, Roanoke, Westlake, or Flower Mound, or Argyle respond with personnel? To account for the needs of that fire?
Yes, sir, there has. And when they respond, what Roanoke gives to me is what I'm proposing to give back to them, is three people on, three people on an engine. That's what they're, that's what they give me every time I call for mutual aid, most of the towns that, that have, you know, staffing issues. Uh, they minimize their response in their engine, which is four or three, for the most part, it's three. If, Westlake, if I call on a house fire here in Trophy Club and I get Roanoke and Westlake, I get all of, I get everybody from Westlake, which is four people. On an engine, and I get three people out of Roanoke, which, and they have six on shift. So they're maintaining a medical crew available, um, all the time. And I'm, on a major fire, I'm dropping my medic and putting on, put him on the quint and backfilling the mutual aid with, uh. With mutual aid, aimless with mutual aid, I'm sorry. So I think this fifth person is vital to our community, the ten thousand people in our workload today.
Director Thomas.
Danny, let me start, start this off by saying I'm not in favor of four people being off-site and two vehicles. But that, that's a management deal that you've got to face and deal with as chief.
And I have dealt with that, it's.
I understand, I'm just, I just want to start off by saying that. I am in favor of, of this half a person, and will vote for you to get the half a person for the following reasons. We're not a town of ten thousand people, we are, ten thousand eight hundred. But at the current build rate, we're going to be a town of fifteen thousand people in about two years. All right, we're headed in that direction, I think it's, I think it's. I think we're trying to over manage you in saying that you've got to figure out how to take this fifth person, fifth person on two shifts. And make a fifth person on the third shift. Uh, I, I just think that we are micromanaging this more than we need to be. Thirdly, we are in fact trying to work with the town, in, in my memory, if it serves me right. We forced the issue of the extra firemen last time, the town did not have it in their budget, Mike Sly didn't have it there. We approved it, and you went back to Mike and he reversed himself and put it in.
The first year.
That was the first year.
Either way, either way, just one of those two, one of those, one of those two people, we drove, we drove that train, right? Sounds to me like this time around, they are desirous of driving that train since they have already approved it. And I have an opinion that, that we ought to be in support of them rather than fighting them.
And I think, I think this program as far as being, being able to split between the town and the, in the mud makes it a, a monetary feasible, uh, scenario.
Guys, that's just, that's just my opinion, I'm prepared to vote in favor of this.
I just want to correct you, the town did not, they voted for it, but voted to, or also made a comment that we're going to drop it if the mud doesn't support it. So, you know, the feeling from the council was they really didn't support it, but they'd leave it in our judgment to make that call.
A five to one, one to vote on the fifth person the other night, so. Um, and, and let me s- s- make a final statement here. Uh, I have what I have today, this community has what it has today because of this board and this mud. And what they bring to the table and what they, the service they bring to the community, my fire station, my trucks, my personnel is what y'all have done. Um, and it's my job to manage that and make the best for this community and do what we need to do, it, it, give, any given time. Um, and I think we do that very, very well. Um, I think this fifth person is, is a need, and I'm asking the board to, to fund this fifth person.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, uh, we have a, uh, motion and a second. Uh, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor.
Now, the motion was to what?
Motion was to deny the, uh.
Not fund the half a person.
Fund the, uh, half, uh, fire person. Uh, I'll call for the vote, all of those in favor of not funding the fire person, uh, please raise your hand. Uh, Neil, how about you?
Uh, I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask, say.
What?
I, I want to have, uh, some more discussions with Danny when I get back to town.
Okay, so you abstain, or no? Okay, that's an abstain, if I heard him right? Okay, uh, all of those in favor, let's do this again. All those in favor, raise your hand of.
Of not funding it?
Not funding it, yes. Uh, I have, uh, Director Hayes and, uh, Director Carr in favor. Uh, all those opposed. Director Moss and Director Thomas and Director Neil.
He abstained.
Abstained, okay.
All right.
I, Jim, uh.
The motion does not pass.
All right, Jim, uh, I think this is something we can bring up at our next meet, uh, regular board meeting. Um, uh, I just, I, again, I would, I don't have a problem of addressing it at, at another budget meeting. This is, uh, something that Danny Thomas, as the chief, is basically going to have to sell me on.
Okay, there, there's no reason that, uh, even though we vote against it now, we can't.
For now, the, for now, it will stay in the budget because it, it, it's in there, I placed it in there and that allows y'all to talk about it later. And then you move from there.
At the next meeting, uh, after Neil has an, an opportunity to, uh, get the information that he desires, then. If the board so directs, then, uh, then we will vote again.
Hey Neil, Neil.
Neil, are you there?
Neil, can you hear us?
Neil, you can't hear us?
Hang on.
There you go.
Yeah, I think I'm back, okay.
Okay.
Okay, let, let, Neil, I, this is Jim Hayes, when you go speak with Danny, would you invite me to go along?
Definitely.
Okay.
Neil, is there, is there background noise that comes across once in a while, like a jet ski or something?
Uh, I, I have, want to go shut off the A C here. Uh, there's nothing going on right now, and once in a while, a car will go by and I think that's what's messing me up.
Okay, could you just put, hit mute and then when you need to speak, just unmute it, that would probably help out.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
I will, I will be doing that from now on.
Okay, what else do we have to look at on page nineteen?
Okay, now we're moving to mud employees, we've gone through. Yeah, I'm sorry, back to the fire on the merit, if you all agree with the town's merit of three percent.
Well, on thi- on this, since we're going to wait on the, um, the firefighter and we don't have firm numbers. Can we just wait till our meeting?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I prefer to wait and let the town come up with some numbers rather than, you know, shooting in the dark.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
And let, let's, uh, okay, let's go to the mud now, to bottom, Jennifer. Any, any comments?
No, I just want to point out that the way it's been budgeted down here, it is, I did not do a percent merit, I've not done that. In the past, I don't really like the percentage idea. Because sometimes it amounts to the lower level employees get a very, very small amount. So I like to look at it overall, so for some of the upper level people, it is less than three percent. For some of the lower level people, it's more than three percent, it's a dollar value. And you could go put in, if you put in a percent here at the merit pay of whatever percent, you can kind of get to see where that would be. But, but it's, it's actually much less than three percent for the higher level employees. So I've presented the merit in that way, a dollar value, not a percent, I did present a cola of one point seven. And I based that, I looked at, I always look at a few things, one is the, uh, what is that? Consumer Price Index, C P I, that was much higher, it was like close to three percent. What?
Two point one.
Two point one, the, um, social security, kind of looking at where they're looking at it, it was one point six nine. And so for cola, I looked at it as about one point seven. And that is, um, how, what I'm recommending for all the, the mud employees. But again, that is up to the board to, to look at those, you, you can change them however you'd like to.
I make a motion that we accept what's, uh, in our budget, one point seven cola and then the merit as, uh, described in our budget numbers. For the, uh, mud employees.
I would second that.
We need to, okay, we got a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Because we're voting on it for, for the, for the mud, you've got to look at pages nineteen and twenty. Uh, just a question, this is just curiosity, Adrian, the numbers here, you have three utility field workers. And the merit pay for two of them is twelve hundred dollars and for one of them is only a thousand and forty dollars, could just kind of help me there?
I can. Um, I put it that way because two of their salaries are very low. Very much under where the others are, one of those individuals has, although not all of his experience is here at the district. It is from another district or another place, he has as much, as many years' experience as many others. But unfortunately, his salary has started out a little bit lower, so I added a little bit in extra for them. They do a very good job and I want to be able to reward them based on where I see they should, their salaries should be.
But the merit pay is based on performance, not, not salary, not salary, not beginning salary.
Any further discussion?
I, I just want to applaud our general manager for doing it that way, I fully agree with that assessment.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Uh, we'll call for the vote if there's no further discussion, all those in favor, raise your hand. Are you unanimous, Neil?
Yes.
Okay, it is unanimous. Okay, page twenty, Jennifer, is there anything on page twenty, since we're on salaries?
Uh, no, that's kind of got it covered unless there's any more questions y'all have over there.
There are no questions on page twenty, we go to page twenty-one, benefit worksheet. Questions on page twenty-one?
I have a question on the fire department, and I was getting back to it, and I'll, I'll, uh. Give my financial minds, Mr. Hayes and Mr. Toomey, more time to reply. But the town is, has unfunded their, uh, retirement program. So their, their input this year is going to be a little over seventeen percent, ours, we paid some upfront, funded it upfront. And our contribution is about eight something percent, is that right, Jennifer?
Yes, you're on, uh, Schedule J, G F J, page twenty-three. And it, it shows the, um, I was going to kind of point out how we.
I guess, I'll wait till retirement again.
No, I'm sorry, no, that's fine, I don't, I just thought nobody had any questions on these other two pages, so.
I don't.
Anybody have?
Jennifer, yeah, I mean, we, we need to look at that because, uh, on the, on the town's retirement, that T M R S. I mean, it's costing us roughly forty-four thousand dollars more than if they were on our retirement system. Which is the, uh, T S D R S. And, um, I think we need a little more background because, uh, the. Is this, is this a one-time deal where it's going to be so high, or is it going to ebb down, or, uh? I mean, we're, we're subsidizing, you know, uh, with our fire employees. Are we subsidizing other town, uh, pension costs because, uh, they've underfunded them, or what's the case?
Jim, if there's no questions, can we just skip twenty-one and twenty-two and go to twenty-three, which is where we are?
Yes, yes.
Uh, Neil, back, um. I guess a couple of years ago, the board and the council worked on a contractual service agreement. For both mud and separate for fire. Fire in with, in the, in the, the contract for fire, the fire department came and requested to the board. And the board agreed that they would be town employees. We don't have any fire employees, they are, they are under town personnel policies. They are, everything is, is through the town, and the board agreed to that. The town is staying in the T M R S and they have to, they are not eligible for T C D R S. If the firefighters had been placed on our payroll, this is when we were looking at doing our own payroll and H R. Is when all of this came about. And at that time, and I would imagine still this time, that the firefighters wanted to stay as town employees. The board agreed to that, so these are the, these are the matching amounts that the town pays for T M R S. I can, um, ask the, the town manager to give me some information on, you know, why there, why there's increased. I can kind of give you a, a generic answer or.
I have an answer for that. Um, Neil, the, this year, there's a G A S B statement that's requiring, uh, it doesn't go into effect till next year. But when it does go into effect, it affects how pensions are reported on balance sheets. And because of that, um, the retirements, T M R S, T C D R S, they're all looking at having to change certain things. To make compliance with this, and Stephen did say to me at some point in our budgeting process. That that is a driving factor in why their rate changed.
And why didn't ours on that same basis?
Because we ha- we've got a, we've, we pre-funded our liability.
Right, so I think what Neil's question is, is it because of an unfunded liability, and I think the answer is yes. That would be my opinion, I don't really know why it's that way. And from what Terry described, that they stated as to the, the new G A S B, again, it just confirms what I think. Uh, there's a lot of reasons, there's a lot of things they look at when they're setting those rates and it's. It deals with the age of employees and how long they think they'll be in the pension. Where they, they only look at usually like a three or a five or a seven historically. What increases for those employees have been, and I, I think there, a few years ago, there was a, a spike in that. That kind of increased the underfunding, but I don't know, there's just lots and lots of factors that play into that. But I think the, the, if, if I'm understanding your question, I don't think we have a choice in that. Unless we renegotiate that contract and request that fire department be on our payroll. And contract EMS services to the town, then they could be in the T C D R S system with us.
All right, well, again, again, Jennifer, if you, uh, informally make an inquiry, that's fine, uh, for Terry, what G A S B is that?
I think it's sixty-eight, Neil, but I can, I'll shoot you an email afterwards and look it up and double check the number, I think it's sixty-eight.
Okay, yeah, yeah, as I, you shoot me an email when you have a chance.
I will, this afternoon.
Thank you.
I have a question, on the seven, seventeen point, whatever they have, uh, seventeen point six two. That's because their whole fund was unfunded, correct?
Underfunded.
Underfunded, I mean.
We don't know for sure why that was.
Okay, well, I'm with Neil, I'd like to know why, and if it's because there's been salaries on people that aren't in the fire. That caused it or whatever reason, I don't think we should be responsible more than the two to one that I think the policy calls for. Two to one match, is that correct?
But, no, it just states that they will be on the town's system, T M R S.
But as far as the town policy or even our policy, we do a two to one match, is that correct?
We do a two to one match, that's correct.
So if there's a penalty for being unfunded or additional cost because of something that happened on either police or, or town. Why would we, you know, have to contribute that penalty on what, how many people you have now, Danny?
Seventeen.
Seventeen in your firefighter?
Oh, eighteen, I think.
What? Fourteen? And including you, right, thirteen and then with you? Okay, so why, if it, we should only pay for what affects those firefighters even though they're looking at it as a whole is okay, everyone's gonna be seventeen point six two. I guess I'm, I'm with Neil. What, what caused that increase or unfunding condition?
Okay, we'll see what we can find out. Um, we can talk to the town manager and their finance about that.
Okay, so this will just fall in that whole fire department thing that we're gonna wait till the next meeting on?
Sure.
Okay.
I, I got a picture in my mind that we made some kind of cash payment to TCDRS.
Yes.
We did.
Okay.
We did an upfront funding, which-
Right. Jennifer, is the town sticking to that, to the two to one contribution to the retirement?
Yes, it is two to one, but instead of, the employees are required to, to sub, uh, to contribute seven percent of their salary. So the town would match that fourteen percent.
Seven percent or up to seven percent?
No, you must do seven percent. And so the town matches that two to one. So that means for every seven percent the employee puts in, the town puts fourteen percent in.
Right.
Theoretically. But in reality, to get to where that match needs to be in their big pot of money, they're estimating right now that they need to be contribu- contributing seventeen point six two percent of the salaries to make it a two to one match. On the other hand, uh, on our, our side, the, our system, it's actually going down a little bit. We're getting two to one match. So when the, when we put in seven percent and we retire, will the town's match a fourteen percent? But because, but because of interest that we'll earn and the funding that we already have in there, we're only having to put in a, about eight point nine one percent. So less than the fourteen percent.
So the residents currently on the town, they have to pay the equivalent of seventeen point six two. And then on the mud side, it's eight point whatever.
Nine one.
Yeah, nine one.
They, they, there was, I think there was a letters, uh, some years back that, uh, from these two retirement governmental agencies that talked about what they thought the unfunded liability was. And I don't know if it talked about how they calculate that or not, but I really don't understand at this point in time what an unfunded liability in TCDRS or TMRS really means. What, how's that number calculated?
It's, as I said, it's very complicated because, for example, they look at me. I'm not gonna live as lo- I'm not gonna, you know, live as long as Kristen at the front desk. And, but then again, she's in her twenties and she's gonna start contributing right now. And so she'll be paying for me when I'm a grandma and I'm, I'm retired. But she'll be putting money in and earning more and more and more. So it has to do with how long you're paying into the system, your age when you enter, when they expect you're gonna retire, whether you're male or female because there's mortality rates based on your, you know, whether you're male or female. A lot of factors and I, I wish I could explain that to you, but I, I, I don't fully understand it myself.
You don't recall the letter from these two agencies, uh, spelling out how they calculated the unfunded liability?
No, I don't think I've ever seen that, but-
I don't know it, that exists either.
We can certainly invite someone from, uh, TCDRS to come to a meeting at some point and kind of cover those things with y'all. I'm sure they would be happy to do that.
I'll be missing that meeting.
Okay, if we have to, do we have anything else on page twenty-three?
I mean, as far as the town, you mentioned the town, you know, opt, they have not, you know, put in concrete with their retirement, you know, again, from the budget. They said, we'll talk about that, you know, look into it and come back to that. They never really went through like they did with the merit and the COLAs as far as their contribution. If that's gonna change to two to one or if they were gonna change from, okay, it's three point, uh, six two over what the norm is, whether they're gonna reduce their, you know, contribution from fourteen minus to three point six two.
I will say that that is not an area that we could do anything but mirror the town because that, that's a system that we're required to do what the system requires if we're gonna allow the employees to be in it. So that wouldn't be something that we could change. Whatever the town decides on that is what we will do.
We don't need to do anything with it, it is what it is.
Going, going back to that last item, I, I don't really want to have them come down and give us a verbal explanation. But if they have any written documentation on how they make that calculation, I'd like to see what it is.
Okay, I'll see what I can find out.
Okay, questions on page twenty-four, anyone?
I just, I don't think we need to make a motion, but I agree with what's on our contributions.
Okay, I, I think we just leave it as is without a motion. Okay, there's nothing on page twenty-four, page twenty-five.
We've covered that.
Contractual services.
We've done twenty-five.
Uh, yeah, there's not much to do with that, uh, as of now because of what's already taken place, so. Okay, page twenty-six.
That all continues with the contractual services, so you can skip over to twenty-eight, which is our fuel and routine vehicle maintenance costs.
Any questions on twenty-eight?
Just, just a short one.
Yes.
If I understand that for the column on the left, we've got, uh, sixteen vehicles. Seven in the water department, four in wastewater and five in fire.
I count eighteen vehicles for water, wastewater and the fire department. We have-
I see seven in water. Am I missing one?
They're not all vehicles, though.
Yeah, I'm just talking about the, you know, I'm not talking about golf carts and stuff, I'm just talking about vehicles.
Seven and then here. Okay, I count seven in water. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven in water.
And I did not count the camera van, I should have.
Right, in wastewater, one, two, three, four, five, six.
Yeah, the vac truck and the camera van are vehicles, I should have counted them.
So six in wastewater and one, two, three, four, five in fire. So that makes a total of eighteen.
Yeah, I agree, okay, thanks.
Okay, any more questions on page twenty-eight?
If we could go back to, uh, twenty-seven real quick. On that, uh, Schedule GF dash L, I think that was twenty-seven, right? It's part of twenty-seven, is that right?
That's the end of the CMO contract.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. On, on the janitorial, you've divvied that up. I know the town's going their own way as far as janitorial services, but what about the-
Yes, the town decided that they were not, um, they, they are not happy with the cleaning service that we provided. That was a shared service before. So the town is getting their own contract for that. I don't know if that's gonna cost the ratepayers, taxpayers anymore or not, but that's the plan. And, um, so our-
For the second building back there?
For their buildings, correct. And so, but there is a portion of this building that's shared, both, um, the lobby, this room, and then there's offices of the town staff themselves. And so I took the total cost of our contract and divided it up to, with the square footage of the, of the building and came up with a per square foot amount per month for the town to share this cost with us. And what you're seeing here is the annual cost, two thousand eight hundred and fifty-five.
Okay, uh, for no further questions, uh, we'll go to, uh, page twenty-nine. Questions on page twenty-nine?
I'd just point out that, uh, those bottom two pink blocks were, I was trying to find out what the, uh, assessment for the, uh, to the town for, uh, the PID. And as I understand what you told me, uh, that the two twenty-four, five ninety-five and the next bottom pink block is the total interest that we have budgeted for next year for the wastewater expansion.
That's correct, the new debt service just for the wastewater expansion.
And the, uh, there was a, somewhere in here, there was the amount that we assessed, uh, the PID for their portion of the two twenty-four, five ninety-five, it wasn't, but I don't-
Yes, okay, if, let's kind of start at the top on this one.
Oh, I see it now, yeah.
Do you see there were the surcharges? But if we go to the top, cause this, this is a kind of complicated sheet and I want to make sure everybody understands it. But the first calculation that we're doing up there does include the mud and it includes the PID. And what we're calculating is the assessment for the PID and the tax rate for the mud for fire services. So we know what the required revenue to, to meet our fire budget is. And when you come up with the tax rate, it comes out to the mud taxes will, will create eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars. The assessments from the PID, three hundred and fifty-nine, seven oh five, for a total to meet the, the required revenue. So the PID assessment is the three fifty-nine, seven oh five.
Right.
That's only for fire. This is the first year we're looking at, uh, the O and M and the PID sharing into that. That's new because of the new water and wastewater contract. So we have to look at what is required for our O and M. And then we calculate a tax rate or assessment ra- or a, a surcharge rate for the PID and we divide it out so that the PID is contributing sixty-six thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars and the mud is contributing one sixty-two, eight fifty-six. So that is how the, the O and M is set. Now the INS is where it gets divided into two different calculations. The first calculation I have to look at is the new debt alone becau- because the PID is only paying any type of debt service towards the new debt, not towards old. So I call it my fake tax rate where I set, if we were just setting a tax rate based just on that new debt, how does that come out and what is the PID's amount? So you see the, for, for next year, we're expecting an interest-only payment. So that comes out to be a hundred and fifty-nine thousand revenue that needs to come from the mud and sixty-five, two twenty from the PID.
This is all based on price valuation?
That's correct. So, so now kind of keep that PID surcharge set it aside. And that's it, because that's an amount that's gonna go into our general fund. The second thing I'm looking at then is the, um, well, back to the PID surcharge. We take that surcharge plus the surcharge that's created up here in the O and M and those two are brought into, there, as a revenue into the general fund. And that's, that, because we then pay that out to the, either the INS or just to, to operations. The next calculation is where I'm looking at setting a, basically what the tax rate is gonna look like with the mud's share of new debt, which in this case is the one fifty-nine, three seventy-five, plus the old debt. And that's how the tax rate is set for the mud. And so the, the bottom amount, you'll see it comes out to, to give us the, the total, uh, debt service that we're gonna need less that, that's created from revenues of four sixty-six, oh fifty-four. Then the last part of this is taking that over and creating the PID surcharge. That's the next step. So now I know what I'm to get from the PID for O and M and the amount I'm to get from the PID for INS. And just because you have to draw the line somewhere, I took the number of connections as of July twenty-eighth. And in that case, it was one thousand two hundred and thirty-one. The total surcharge to be collected is a hundred and thirty-one, eight sixty-four, which comes out to a hundred and seven dollars and twelve cents per PID customer per year. So with the town's approval, the, or notification to the town and then they are to adopt a ordinance setting this, there will be a surcharge of eight dollars and ninety-three cents per month on the PID customers' water bills. And that we will, that will, will be kept by the mud. So right now, that's what it looks like. All of this is subject to change a little bit because of, um, not so much the INS and the O and M, but the, the fire tax could change a little bit with some of the changes we've made today.
Jennifer, I'm sorry, again, what is the surcharge? I, I get the amount, I get how you calculate it, what is it?
It's the, the PID's share of debt service for new debt towards the wastewater plant and their share of operations and maintenance debt, uh, tax that the mud pays. And it's part of that water and wastewater contract. Um, it, we kind, when we were in the joint meeting, we talked about this and recall that, um, it was, uh, I believe the town manager said that this was clearer to the resident as to how this was calculated than just being out of district and paying fifteen percent.
So the eight-
And I said at that time, I disagreed with that and this is why I disagree with that. This is very complicated.
The eight ninety-three per month were how it yields these two figures over here for the PID?
That's correct.
Got it.
That's correct. So it's kind of complicated, but I think once, this was the first year and I think once we kind of get, see it year after year, maybe we'll have a better understanding of that.
Any further questions? The, uh, the next few pages probably don't require any, uh, questions, but if you have them, let's combine, uh, up through page thirty-six, any questions on those last four pages?
Numbers are, numbers are so small, I can't read them anyway, so I guess they're right.
That's right, well.
I had to crack out my magnifying glass.
Look, look what would have happened if she'd have gone with eight and a half by eleven feet.
Yeah, that's right.
It would really be something happen. Okay, any further questions?
I have none.
Any other questions on our budget from anybody? Neil, any questions? Neil?
I had to take off, I had you on mute.
Oh, okay. Uh, any further, any further questions from you before we quit?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, I'm all set for this end, Jim.
Okay, sounds good, Neil. We, in that case, uh, the, uh, budget meeting, special meeting, uh, is now adjourned at one fifty PM.